Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zeus symbol of her friendship among united cultures. To a land acknowledgement, this county building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people at a place known as Oga Poge. We honor the land itself for those who have deep connections to the land, and Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with the neighboring communities and all people who will remain stewards of this land throughout generations. Let's now have a moment of reflection from, and I get to say this beautiful name, Isabella Erraso Lujan. Thank you, Isabella.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today, being ever mindful of our decisions, and in the best interest of our community, we take a moment of silence.
Thank you, everybody. I want to just sail a brief moment of reflection for Stephen Ballinger, who was killed in a bicycle accident on Surrios Road last week. I got to meet and work with Stephen last year, maybe it was the year before as well, on a couple of projects. And he was a pretty interesting cat. He was a champion collegiate bicycle racer who lived and sadly died by the bike. And he literally lived to be on a bike. He was a road racer, you know, as good as they could get. And we used to talk about road racing, and he knew some people that I had known. I was not a road racer at any level, but we had some mutual friends that he idolized when he was growing up, and so we talked fondly about them. He was also a big pickleballer, and so for the folks in the pickleball community, they asked that I would say something and acknowledge his passing today. So for all of us here, if we can acknowledge that, and please wear a helmet, and please ride safely, and please look out for bikes.
Manager Schaefer, do we have any changes to the agenda as it's been provided to us?
Chair Bustamante, commissioners, no, there are no recommended changes to the agenda as presented today. I would just note that the initial agenda for today's meeting was posted on Tuesday, June 17th at approximately 6:20 PM. And then an amended agenda was posted on Friday at approximately 4:38 PM. The only change in terms of the actual agenda was with regard to miscellaneous action item 6A. Again, that item appeared on the original agenda, but the caption relative to that resolution was in fact updated. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green. We have a second.
I second it.
Second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Our agenda has been approved. Years of service retirement, new hires and recognitions. Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and commissioners. Want to take a moment to celebrate some significant milestones relative to county employees with consecutive years of service, as well as acknowledge our retirement and then welcome some new county employees and volunteers. Starting with significant anniversaries, we have three individuals who are celebrating 10 years of consecutive service with Santa Fe County in the month of June, all in the county assessor's office. June 2015 apparently was a good vintage for county assessor employees. They are Pedro Armendares, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Margaret Barella, and Steven Serna, all celebrating 10 years with the county and the county assessor's office. In the finance division of the county manager's office, Jerome Blay is celebrating 15 years of service with Santa Fe County. So want to acknowledge and appreciate the dedication of those employees to the county and our constituents. Wanted to also recognize that in the road maintenance division of the public works department, that Lawrence Impresia retired or will be retiring at the end of the month of June. We wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Relative to new hires with the county, wanted to acknowledge the hiring of Isaac Romero in our corrections department as a detention officer. Also Donald Seba, who was hired in our finance, excuse me, in our human resources and risk management division as an employee leave and development specialist. Also wanted to welcome Israel Gandaria, who has joined us in the community services department as a driver cook's assistant, as well as Frank Jones, who's a code enforcement inspector senior in our growth management department. In the sheriff's office, we welcomed four two new deputy sheriffs, all at the rank of deputy sheriff three. That's Jerome Broyles, Natasha Cattori, Bryce Levy, and Christopher Wallenstein. Also in the corrections department, we welcomed Bruce Gall, Alejandro Gutierrez, and Dolores Trujillo. In the county manager's office, in the finance division, wanted to acknowledge and welcome Masaiq Hasik. And in our IT division, San Keth Kota and Gabriel or Gabrielle Martinez. We had another driver's cook assistance in the community services department, Raul Morales Garcia. And then a public safety aide in the sheriff's department, Carlos Mendoza Correa. Relative to volunteer firefighters, to be reflected on our tool, as a volunteer, it means that you've achieved a certification that allows you to fight interior fires or wildland fires or respond to medical calls with the training level of at least an emergency EMT basic. So again, the following individuals have received one of those certifications, and we wanted to acknowledge and celebrate their volunteer service to the county. And they are John Burke, John Galicia, Jeremy Marchant, and David Montoya. Also Alyssa Petro Soniak, and Joaquin Romero, and Michelle Sinclair. So again, all of those individuals are volunteering their time and service on behalf of our community. So I wanted to celebrate those volunteer members of our fire department. Thank you, Chair Bustamante and commissioners.
Thank you, and thank those of you who have graduated up and accomplished more, for those of you who volunteer and an absolute welcome to our new employees. Do we have any comments from the commission? Commissioner Green?
I would just like to say that it looks like there's a good crop of volunteers and folks coming in. And maybe 10 years from now, we will all look back and remember this day and that our volunteer fire department hired really well. So thank you very much for, and congratulations. And for deputies, we'll come back to that in 10 years.
Great news. Okay, item I, recognition of employees for awards, accreditations, recognitions, and other accomplishments. Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and commissioners. So I'm going to recognize a few individuals in no particular order. First, we are soon to mark, you know, a pivot relative to our customer service center that resides at 240 Grant Avenue. It was launched in August of 2024 as a pilot effort to increase our public facing customer service in our most heavily trafficked public facing building, which again is 240 Grant Avenue. A lot of individuals stepped up to take on the responsibilities relative to staffing that customer service center. The board approved as part of the interim budget for fiscal year 2026, a new administrative assistant position that will be primarily responsible for taking over the customer service center. So the individuals whom I'm about to name, you know, won't get an entire reprieve as they may be asked to help out from time to time, you know, as that individual takes leave, what have you. But I did want to acknowledge their efforts, their commitment to customer service, and willingness to again step up and assist the county in standing up this center. So individuals who have been pulling shifts there include, in the county manager's office, Emma Fel and Sarah Smith, your own constituent services liaisons, Kimberly Vehill, Tina Salazar, Gabe Bustos, Umbra Baca, and Brittany Lovato. Also, many individuals from the human resources division have been helping out to make that customer service center pilot a success. And they include Tori Gallegos, Melissa Martinez, Melinda Jegelsmoquino, Jessica Casillas, I believe, Trey Pareja, Maria Escobar, Nadia Martinez, Alyssa Byrne, Marissa Trujillo-Sandoval, Annabelle Almaguer, Angel Larinaga, and our own human resources and risk management division director Valerie Gi Park, leading by example. So wanted to again thank everybody for their initial and ongoing efforts to make that customer service center a success. Separately, the fire department wants to acknowledge and celebrate the fact that four regional staff members have successfully completed the 11-month paramedic program through the University of New Mexico. And those county employees who are now paramedics are James Law, Noah Cook, Jared Dominguez, and Jonathan Cram, I believe is the last name of that individual. So congratulations to those firefighter paramedics on that accomplishment. Finally, we have several individuals at the county who have achieved a variety of different certifications from the Edge Program administered by the Mexico State University. We had four individuals who were graduated this spring, Kristy Brusso and Maria Escobar, and Michael Carr, all received their certified public supervisor certifications. And our county treasurer, Jennifer Monzanares, received as well her certified public supervisor certification. So congratulations to each of those employees and to our county treasurer. Valerie Gi Park earned two certificates in the last quarter. That will be significant as we move forward in addressing some areas of growth in the county. That includes a certified associate and project management certificate, as well as a succession planning certificate. Finally, our safety and risk staff have, several employees in that business unit of the human resources and risk management division have received a variety of certifications. John Baker received a specialist in safety and health certification, both for general industry and the construction industry. Eric Martinez also received those certifications in general industry and construction industry, as well as a certified safety and health official for general industry. I believe that qualifies Eric to instruct both OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 in general industry. Similarly, Isaiah Vehill also received a specialist in safety and health for risk management, as well as similar specialist certifications for general industry and construction industry, and is also authorized to instruct OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 in general industry. Finally, Epitapia received, I believe, all of the same certifications and authorizations as Isaiah. So that's a long list of accomplishments and acknowledgements spanning a lot of the county operations. And so again, thank you and congratulations to all of the individuals I named for, you know, their service to the county and their continued efforts to improve their skillsets and the value that they bring to our team and to our community through education. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer, and thank you to all those who have sought to improve your skills and grow in your positions. Do we have any comments from the members of the board? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, just congratulations to everybody who's been working to improve themselves. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate that we're in a work environment that promotes growth, learning, professional and personal development. And I think there's a lot to be said about that, having that in local government. So I commend and congratulate everyone, but also thank the leadership of the county for promoting that kind of environment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, moving on. So thank you all very much. It matters a lot to what we do in service to our community members. Approval of the meeting minutes. Do we have any issues, questions, concerns from the May 14th Board of County Commissioners special meeting minutes? If we have no changes, do I have a motion to approve those?
I'm moved to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2025.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Hughes.
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Request approval for the May 20th Board of County Commissioners special meeting minutes. Are there any changes, comments, questions to the minutes?
If there are none, I'll move to approve.
We have, hearing none, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes from May 20th are approved. Request approval for the May 27th Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'm moved to approve, May 27th, 2025, commission meetings.
We have a second, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hank Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes for May 27th are approved. Okay, item three, consideration of commissioner proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and other items. These are action items. Our first is to request approval of a proclamation proclaiming June 24th as Girls Inc. of Santa Fe Day. Commissioner Justin Hughes. The floor is yours.
I will accept Justin Green, not Justin Hughes today, but that's all right. So it happens. So those two guys over there, right? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for all the staff that helped queue this up today. This is a proclamation in support of Girls Inc., and I know this is a pretty well-known organization here in Santa Fe, but I want to bring some additional light to what they do for young women in Santa Fe and how they really build cohorts and generations of amazing young women into the community. I got to take part in one of their presentations now, maybe it's a few months ago, but certainly a few weeks ago, and was just so impressed with the leadership of the organization and the young women that were coming out of it. Thank you very much. And I was like, wow, we need to bring them here to teach everybody that is here on the dais with us, some of the Santa Fe County staff that work in youth development about the value that they can bring to us. And so the group will get to present a little bit about what they do, and I've asked them to think about ways that we could support them. And so very specifically, they may ask us for something. And so listen adeptly, and let's see how we can support this organization. They've got some exciting plans. Many of you probably know and drive by their facility that has been their facility over on Paseo de Peralta and Tommy Macioni Park over by Hillside Avenue. But they've got a new facility that is going to be in the heart of District Two and is going to do, you know, scale their organization at another level. I will read the proclamation later, but right now I'd like to invite Ginger and her team up to the microphone to tell us a little bit about Girls Inc., please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Ginger Williams. I'm the chief philanthropy officer with Girls Inc. of Santa Fe, and we are celebrating 70 years in Santa Fe. I brought with me some of the girls, and they'd love to talk about their experiences.
Perfect. So thank you so much for having us. I am Madonna Hernandez. I am the chief programs officer. And I would just like to lead with, every single girl in the county needs to have Girls Inc. programming. And you're going to get a chance to hear from some of our kiddos who can tell you about why. So let's hear from them.
When I grew up, I want to be an anesthesiologist. Hi, I'm Allison Davis. And a few weeks ago, when I was hanging out with some friends, we decided to make a sweater. We were wondering whether we should put buttons or zippers. With my conflict resolution skills and communication skills that Girls Inc. has taught me, we could resolve our, we could resolve our argument. We decided to go with buttons. We decided to go with buttons. I can take that communication skills and those conflict resolution skills into my anesthesiology life and make sure that everybody is safe and I can communicate with my colleagues and patients. Thank you.
Hi. When I want to grow up, I want to be a zoologist. I'm Amber Willis Brown. I've been going to Girls Inc. my whole life. And over at Girls Inc., I've been seeing their mission and how much progress they have been getting. Over the years, they have supported me in my dream to protect animals and make sure that they are safe. When I grow up, I want to be able to take that mission and make sure I can make animals safe. Thank you.
When I grow up, I want to be a dermatologist, so I can support people with their health. A couple of weeks ago, me and my group were doing media journals, and we were using cardstock. But we couldn't decide how we would pass it around, and I tried to get the cardstock, but I got pushed around. And I thought, and I thought I was really uncomfortable, and I'm sure my group was too. But Girls Inc. taught me how to resolve these problems. So we decided to take it around in a circle, and everybody got the cardstock that they wanted. I was so happy that everybody got the cardstock. And when, and I will take these skills so I can support people as a dermatologist the way I wanted to be supported that day. Thank you.
Thank you, but can you let us know your name? We didn't catch your name. Thank you.
Mia Martinez.
Thank you, Mia.
When I grow up, I want to be a physical therapist. I'm Lillian Fowler, and I've been going to Girls Inc. for years and years. But one of the most important moments just happened about a week ago. I was with my group climbing on a climbing wall, and before I started, I felt incredibly nervous. When I finally got up to the wall and I saw everyone cheering me on, I felt like I could actually do it. I started climbing, and they cheered me on the entire way. Even when I needed to take a break from climbing, but didn't want to quite go down yet, they kept cheering me on. Eventually, I made it to a more difficult bit, and they kept cheering me on. But eventually, I made it to the top. As I finally got off the climbing wall, I realized the importance of the community that Girls Inc. has helped me build.
Thank you, Commissioner Green, for the proclamation about our 70th anniversary, and thank you all of you for listening to our girls about the program.
So.
We got a video for you, yes?
You do have a video for us. We're very excited to share it. And then if you all would like to ask any questions of our young people, we are more than happy to let you chat with them.
So while we're waiting for that to queue up, what is your slogan? What do you, your young ladies become?
Our young mission is to make young girls strong, smart, and bold.
You do a great job. Thank you. And I'll just continue talking until they cut me off for the video, but I'm going to say, one of the great things about, you know, you address a gap in society, both for women and for just an age group that need mentorship. And so sometimes we don't have it at home. Sometimes we just need a different perspective. And it's really blown me away what I saw over, you know, weeks ago and heard from you. And Madonna, you've been there for how long?
I am in my 26th year. So yeah, I've seen Girls Inc. through many things. And really at its core is just helping, well, it's actually inspiring these kids to be healthy, educated, and independent. So we're giving them knowledge, skills, and attitudes to be able to go out into the world and tackle whatever issues come up. You know, we have economic literacy so they can learn how to use money and to be able to become smart investors. We have media literacy where they're able to take the messages that they're receiving, and they can decide how they want to digest them. We have an outdoor leadership program that we heard Lillian talk about, where they are essentially going out into the wilderness and being completely self-sufficient. Can you imagine being a 12- to 14-year-old going out into the wilderness and literally feeling like you can take over, well, just take on any challenge that comes up, which we have. Those kiddos have been caught in rainstorms. They have encountered bears, mountain lions. They have had altitude sickness at the top of a mountain, and they've had to figure out how to get other kids down. They are, you know, the heroes of their own stories, and that's really what we want to continue to do, is just make sure that they are the ones who are stepping out, using their voices, and really being able to impact change in the community around them. So thank you so much for letting me explain that.
It's about your future plans and a little bit about the new facility that you're working on.
Yes, thank you so much. We serve about 1,100-plus children a year, and we do that in two different ways. We deliver programs at our Hillside facility that Justin, Commissioner Green was telling us about. We've been there for 68 of our 70 years. We can accommodate between 70 and 100 girls at a time at that facility. But we have a goal to reach 10% of the girl population in Santa Fe. And we were hoping to do that by expanding our facility. Our summer program fills in two minutes flat, and then we have a waiting list that's twice as long as what we can accommodate on a weekly basis. So we purchased a four-acre property, the previous Santa Fe greenhouses at the corner of Rufina and Rufina Circle in February. And we'll be spending the next five years raising money to build a building that can accommodate up to 300 girls at a time with a goal of reaching 2,000 to 3,000 girls annually. We also do community-based programs through the schools, where we are going into the schools during the school day, and all of our programs are done with impact, which means that all girls are getting at least 50 hours annually. You can't build a relationship with the kids and teach them anything until you've actually built relationship with them. So we don't do single one-off workshops, but rather extend exposure. Most of the girls that spoke here today are probably with us for 300 to 500 hours a year, and you can tell based on their confidence of being able to speak at a microphone in front of big scary grownups. So we have big plans to expand and grow and continue to create a ripple effect in Santa Fe and beyond, so.
Thank you. And I encourage us to figure out how we can either help support your programs or your capital raise. You do such great work in the community, and you've done it for so long. Have no doubt you'll do great stuff in the future.
Thank you so much. I think the one other thing I wanted to mention about Madonna is she was just certified as a youth mental health professional trainer. And I know that that's such an important thing for the county, the state, the city. New Mexico has some small hurdles that we are always trying to cross. And so she'll be training people in the community for youth mental health first aid. So that's part of our outreach and community engagement and family strengthening plan in the next year, so. in the next year, so.
Thank you. Any comments before I read it?
So, we're on for comments. Commissioner, comments. Kikari Stone?
First, I just want to thank all of you, you young persons who have purpose, integrity, you carry dignity, and I think it's important for girls and gender non-conforming girls who aren't born at birth as girls as their sex, but there'd be all kinds of diversity, and I continue to wish you well on your journey. It's wonderful to have an organization like this that mentors you, but also provides you the structure for your leadership, for your voice, and may you always be who you truly are, no matter what that looks like. Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent. Anyone else? Commissioner Johnson?
I, too, want to just commend you on what you're doing and the good work that you're providing. 70 years. What I would love to see are the metrics where all these young girls grew up to be women and what they did thereafter. So, thank you so much for your good work. Commissioner Green?
So, with that, I will read this proclamation, and we can vote on it when I'm done. So, Santa Fe County Proclamation proclaiming today, June 24, 2025, as Girls Inc. of Santa Fe Day, introduced by myself, Commissioner Justin Green. Whereas, for 70 years, Girls Inc. of Santa Fe has stood as a steadfast presence in our community, uplifting the voices, dreams, and leadership of young people through mentorship, education, and deep-rooted care. And whereas, the organization delivers research-based programming that equips girls and youth with the tools to navigate a complex world with resilience, self-advocacy, and boldness. And whereas, Girls Inc. of Santa Fe partners with families, schools, and local leaders to ensure access to transformative experiences from STEM exploration and conflict management to mental wellness support and civic engagement. And whereas, in 2025, the organization is reaching over 1,100 young people across 29 program groups in 17 Santa Fe schools, a reflection of both the urgent need and the enduring trust this organization holds. And whereas, this milestone year marks not only just the passage of time, but a celebration of generational impact, a legacy carried forward by alumni, mentors, and youth who have found strength, solidarity, and purpose within the Girls Inc. community. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners encourages all members of our community to honor this occasion by investing in the future where every young person is seen, heard, and celebrated. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim June 24, 2025, as Girls Inc. of Santa Fe Day. And if we take a vote, this will be approved, adopted, and passed on this 24th day of June, and I make the motion to approve this.
Commissioner Green, please make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to proclaim today Girls Inc. Day. We have, from Commissioner Green, we have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
With the resounding aye, today is officially Girls Inc. Day in Santa Fe County. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Let's get a picture with you all. Whoa, 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 whoa. Don't skedaddle too fast. Next on our agenda, item B, a resolution defending our U.S. Constitution and separation of powers. Commissioner Hank Hughes and Commissioner Bustamante. Commissioner Hughes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a resolution to encourage Congress to take back its power. As we all recognize, the President has way overstepped his power. Perhaps the most disturbing to me is the fact that he defunded USAID with no cooperation from Congress. Very important program funded by, I mean, over the years, Republicans and Democrats supported that program and many other programs. FEMA, another one that he's essentially defunded. So, this encourages our congressional delegation to take the leadership back and encourage their others in members of Congress to take their role in the Constitution. And that's about it for me. What do you have to say?
Commissioner Hughes, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this forward and giving me the opportunity to share with you. There is international concern regarding the bypassing of Congress for taking action, and there are a lot of questions of the legalities of it. And I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to teach environmental law and always going over the separation of powers, which is literally what makes this country unique from any other. And it is the one thing, our Constitution, when I was a young, growling, arms-so-mared at the government person, and my dad said, "We have a Constitution that makes us the place that everybody wants to be." And upholding that is critically important to me and those who have appreciated the values that this country has stood for, for a very long time. There are many who wouldn't agree, but usually when that happens, it's because their forward thinking is about what their agenda is. So, in this interest, the separation of powers is about making sure that the agenda is still a Democratic agenda. I don't need to say that. We do have two people here who would like to speak to this, and I will let Commissioner Hughes introduce them, and you may come to the podium, please.
Paul and Judy, can we hear from you? Julie?
Well, I'm going to talk about the Declaration of Independence because it's also a very important founding document. When the Declaration of Independence declared the English King, George III, a tyrant with, quote, "a history of repeated injuries and usurpations," it listed a bill of particulars among 28 specific grievances that proved his tyrannical actions. Among these were six grievances that Donald Trump has already repeated. One, cutting off trade with the rest of the world. That's in the Declaration of Independence. Imposing taxes without our consent. Again, tariffs are a form of taxation. Depriving us of trial by jury. People taken and arrested without legal process and sent to other countries, also in the Declaration of Independence. Maintaining standing armies during peacetime without legislative consent, or we all know what happened in California. Transporting us beyond the seas for alleged offenses, all very pertinent. Rendering the military independent of and superior to the civil power. Those six things that I just read are all word-for-word in the Declaration of Independence. Trump has also imposed or threatened other measures injurious to our citizens, including major cuts to Medicaid on which nearly 40% of our county's citizens depend. Closing eight rural hospitals in the state of New Mexico, which will inevitably lead to a patient overload in Santa Fe hospitals. Cutting funds on which many of our nonprofits, cuts that have already led to loss of personnel and services. The supportive, I'll give you a few examples, the supportive Housing Coalition, the Emergency Food Assistance Program, the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program in the public schools all have been cut. Federal funding has been cut. Putting up for sale U.S. Forest Service land now administered by Ski Santa Fe, Aspen Vista, Great Tzuski Campground, Chamisa Trail, Borrego Bear Wall Trails, and most, and this is the most important, most of the watershed land used to protect our reservoir. Again, federal funds being cut without the agreement of Congress, even though Congress appropriated those funds initially. In short, Santa Fe County has its own bill of particulars against Trump, who's tyrann-
That wouldn't be appropriate at this time. We're looking for support for this particular legislation, and we've run a little bit over our time.
Oh, okay. I'm at the end. I have half a sentence to go.
Okay.
Yeah. Have striking similarities to George III, as noted in the Declaration. In these terrible times, we need to rely on both the Declaration of Independence and the American Constitution.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you, and to both of you sponsors, thank you as well. I am Paul Dyrdek in District Four. Mr. Trump swore an oath to defend the Constitution and promptly began violating it. He has continued to do so every day, much to the harm that Santa Fe County will sustain to our people and our environment, not least to your and my commitments to public morality toward the poor. He swore to defend the Constitution of the United States, and you swore to support the Constitution of the United States. You have upheld your oaths. He has not. You do support the Constitution despite his refusal to defend it. I hope that the awkwardness of his abandonment of your obligation weighs as heavily on you as it does upon me, one of your constituents. The resolution before you will cause someone to accuse you of wasting the people's time in an empty gesture. You will devise your own rejoinder, of course. I can hear a few of you already. But if it were me, I'd say something like this. Sir, I beg to differ. I took an oath of office to support the Constitution. My oath was not an empty gesture. Mr. Trump's apparently was. I voted on this resolution to defend my own oath in light of the fact that his failure to do the same will cause pain and suffering in Santa Fe County. There is nothing, nothing, empty about that. Commissioners, thank you for considering.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, if you will please read the resolution.
Unless there are any other comments from, maybe take comments first.
Commissioner Kikari Stone?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Bustamante, I just want to thank you. I was very pleased to see this as a resolution you put forth, and this is particularly timely and also dramatic in terms of the impact, not just locally and for our state, but nationally and globally. Declaring war without congressional approval, Medicaid cuts, and the whole litany of one party or one executive decision totally runs counter to our democratic principles, and the separation of power was put forth to make sure we have checks and balances. It's part of the democratic process, and I commend you on putting this forth. The danger and the outcome of concentrating power in one entity leads to mass oppression of peoples, and I think that's what we're seeing, and it leads to mass tyranny, which is not, our democracy was not intended to be set up that way. Excuse me for pausing, but I think many of us feel very frustrated with our situation, and I also want to encourage our county, our constituents, and New Mexicans to get out and continue civic discourse, and for educators in our school system to continue to include this as part of the education curriculum around governance and the separation of powers, because we need to have the next voters educated on why this is so important. So, thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Hughes and Chair Bustamante, for putting this forward. I want to thank the speakers. Two very pertinent, yet different speeches before us today, underscoring the Constitution and the obligations of the executive office and how there have been failings, is extremely a pertinent reminder for us. And the second speaker's comments on our oaths of office are also important because we are voted in a democratic election, and we have certain responsibilities that we need to take seriously, and we need the federal government and their elected officials to do the same. So, to expect that at the local level to be projected onto the federal level, I mean, it's outrageous that it's not happening. I attended the public and very peaceful protest yesterday, and as Commissioner Kikari Stone mentioned, those sort of public demonstrations are also essential, in part to give us energy to continue in the fight against tyranny. And so, I want to thank Commissioners Hughes and Bustamante for this, and we will, of course, or I will, of course, support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Hughes. You know, we have a difficult thing here where we're only allowed to have two sponsors. So, you know, before it got to me, it had its two sponsors, so I would have sponsored it had I been given the chance, but that's okay. The first thing that we do when we become commissioners is take an oath of office, and the oath of office is to defend the Constitution, right? So, that's the first thing. It's like the cornerstone. Everything else is almost superfluous at that point. You know, represent our community, absolutely, but defend the Constitution above all things. And so, I take it pretty seriously. I love this job. I love representing our community with the lens of the Constitution and how, you know, the separation of powers is laid out in that. I wish Congress had some balls. I wish the judiciary had some muscle, and there may be some issues coming forward, you know, and we may have to look at this in the future as to ways to make sure that this sort of regime doesn't happen again. I'll leave it there. We are blessed with our Constitution, and we are the best country ever, so let's, you know, you know, we've got laws. Let's uphold them. So, thank you, Commissioners. Yes, all countries are wonderful, but we are the best, so.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I do want to say I do regret that we referenced specifically the President. This is not just on one individual. There is clearly a movement. There are clearly people who support this. So, this isn't about one individual or calling out an individual. It's calling out a way of thinking that really matters, and it is bipartisan, because if we allow one entity to take it all on their own individual values and aligned with that, then another entity, when we're not around, could possibly come in and bring a whole, the way other countries have it, right? Many other countries where a whole new regime comes in and everything's different. There's a reason why we have had this separation of church-state, separation of powers. All of that assures that the voices that come to the table are heard and balanced and valued, not just let's push everyone out. And it's not contingent on one person who's sitting in the executive office. It's a big picture. So, Commissioner Hughes, with that, if you'll please read our resolution, and I will read the other half.
Thank you, and I just, I feel like we're in a room of people who appreciate democracy, and this affirms it. Whereas, the Santa Fe County Board of Commissioners Board believes that the United States Constitution is the basis for our democratic republic and our civil society. And whereas, the first three articles of the U.S. Constitution establish three separate branches of government, the executive, legislative, and judicial branches. And whereas, the New Mexico Department of Justice has joined the Attorney Generals of numerous other states in the filing of multi-state lawsuits that allege that officials or agencies of the executive branch have taken action that is outside of their constitutional or statutory authority or is otherwise unlawful, including, but not limited to, imposing tariffs and duties, unilaterally dismantling federal programs, spending, and personnel without congressional approval, categorically freezing congressionally-approved obligated funds, including Federal Emergency Management Act, FEMA, funds. including Federal Emergency Management Act FEMA funds, and Department of Health and Human Service grants, and highway planning and construction funds, unilaterally creating and filling an office, usurping Congress's power to legislate under the elections clause, and interfering with states' inherent sovereignty and constitutional power to regulate and the time and place and manner of federal elections, and declaring that birthright seditionship does not extend to any child born in the United States, to a mother who is unlawfully present or lawfully present on a temporary basis, and a father who is neither a U.S. citizen nor lawful permanent resident, and...
Whereas the Board finds freezing of USAID funds by executive order especially concerning since it may, and understandably is already, but excuse me, may lead to many deaths overseas, and whereas the Board finds that freezing FEMA funds by executive order is also concerning because communities hit by hazardous weather events or wildfires may not have the funds to rebuild, and whereas each member of the Santa Fe County Board of Commissioners swears an oath to the U.S. Constitution and those elected to a public office, and thus has a duty to protect and defend the U.S. Constitution and the rights of residents within their jurisdiction that are being harmed by violations of the Constitution, and whereas in accordance with its duty to protect and defend the U.S. Constitution, the Board supports the role of the U.S. Congress as a co-equal branch of the U.S. government.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that Santa Fe County Board of County Commissioners hereby, one, declares its support of the role of the U.S. Congress as a co-equal partner, branch of the U.S. government under the U.S. Constitution, and, two, supports and encourages the congressional delegation of the state of New Mexico to lead their colleagues in ensuring the integrity of the U.S. Constitution. We plan to pass and approve this 24th day of June 2025, and I'll make that a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Motion made by Commissioner Hughes. I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, resolution approved. May we have a resolution number, please?
Item 3B is Resolution 2025066.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Onto our next agenda item. A resolution to establish a three-year customer service plan. A year and five months ago, we, as a commission, passed the, passed a resolution to establish value for customer service by Santa Fe County, and it has been amazing to see how much Santa Fe County departments have grown and working and understanding, and it's never been a question of anyone's mind of whether or not we know and acknowledge that we are here in service. Every last one of us is here in service of our communities. Our jobs exist because there are people in our communities who rely on the services that Santa Fe County provides. That being said, we had a transition in oversight in the program, specifically what we were moving towards with customer service. There have been meetings. We now have had our first meeting of customer service. I'm not going to read the entire resolution to you, because it is available online, but it is important for us to acknowledge what's different today. And what's different today because we already have acknowledged that we value customer service, and many of us are doing an incredible job that is absolutely measurable. We want to make sure that we're affirming that. Customer service isn't just about what we do for those who don't work with us, or, I mean, sorry, who work directly outside, working with the county. It's also about those of us who work together and how we treat each other. And there is enough data out there that shows that when people are valuing the position that they're in and treat each other and their external customers with respect, that people are happier in their jobs and tend to feel more pride and frankly appreciate showing up to their job. So, for this resolution and acknowledging that we have already passed, that we are committed to this work, I am asking that the Santa Fe County Commission adopt the following that will be reflected in its strategic plan, which was, again, part of the conversation that had started with our previous oversight with Cindy. We are looking to, one, and I'll read, now, therefore, be it resolved by Santa Fe County Board of County Commissioners, as reflected in this adopted strategic plan, it reaffirms its commitment to maintaining the highest standard of customer service for all individuals who interact with Santa Fe County government, and directs leadership within each county department to develop a three-year customer service enhancement plan that aligns with the county's strategic plan and establishes customer service goals. Each department shall include specific strategies and timelines for achieving the objectives of their three-year plan, methods for evaluating the effectiveness of the implemented strategies, and measures to ensure accountability and timeliness of action. So we know, well, I know I'm a good customer service person. I know that. But how do we show that? What is it that really demonstrates it? And how can we get that information, that feedback? Because frankly, that's really what makes our work worth it, when we get the feedback knowing we're doing a good job. So in this interest, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Commissioner Bustamante. This is, you know, a legacy issue that we've been working on for a few years, and so we have two new commissioners on the board here that have probably heard that we've made great strides in the last few years, and hopefully their constituents, as well as my constituents, have noticed it. I've heard it from constituents all across, all across the county that we're, that we're doing much better in this. I do want us to, you know, without amending this, I do want us to make a note that customer service starts internally, right? When your own organization, you need to break down silos and you need to work across the organization, because then things get done so much faster and so much easier, and you become, you get out of your own way, you being the organization. And so I want us to really focus not only on the externalities, but also on the internal operations of the county, so people don't feel like they don't want to talk to each other, that they really like and they respect the team that is Santa Fe County. And additionally, I would hope that we would look at technologies to make it a little easier for constituents to feel like they're being responded to and acknowledged and getting the results that they want. It's not all the human factor, although that's a key aspect of it, but it is also technologies that, you know, go the extra mile to make sure that when somebody sends an email, there's an acknowledgement that somebody has sent something in. We get people who volunteer for boards here that I hope we've overcome this, but for a while I was hearing comments from constituents saying, well, I volunteered to be on the planning commission, but I didn't get an acknowledgement that you even received my email. That's basic customer service, and so I hope that we can get over that. It's a technology thing. In that case, there's so many different ways that we can do this, so I thank you for keeping up on this. This is a nice aspect of your chairwomanship this year, for you to memorialize this into a three-year plan. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Kakari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I appreciate your leadership on this resolution. I fully support it, and I just want to add, as the county leadership is looking at this three-year plan, that maybe consider modules or awareness training on anti-stigma training and anti-discrimination training as part of customer service, as we think about all constituents, all residents of Santa Fe being our customers, whether they're low-income or live in hothousing, that we don't have a pejorative attitude towards people when they say, I need this in my community, and there's a treatment as if, well, you know, beggars shouldn't be choosers. That's what government typically does, whether you're an immigrant or you speak Spanish, or even if you're without housing and homeless, maybe you can't get to the kiosk, but there are customers as well, and they may not have a ZIP code that they document as part of their home. But that means they can go to any ZIP code in district, and they're customers to all five districts. So I just want to emphasize that, particularly at this time where there's a tone of some people matter, some people don't. We include everybody and everyone matters. So, thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Commissioner Kakari Stone. If there isn't anyone else, before I call for the vote, I want to thank everyone who has stepped up, even when we just mentioned it a year and five months ago. There has been a lot of traction for everyone who has been at the kiosk and made sure it's covered. Thank you, Sarah Smith. Thank you to everyone who has stepped forward and made the mention to the various departments. We have seen and heard a lot of growth in that area. So I just want to acknowledge for what people are already doing and moving forward on the technology as we acknowledge that. I do want to say something, one thing about the technology and recognizing, especially in, especially parts of District Three where we don't have the technology, whereabouts, and this is with no disrespect to anybody just about over 70 or getting close, like some of us are, is that some people aren't technically, you know, competent. No disrespect, I always use my mom as the litmus test. But I know that some of these things are difficult for her, so acknowledging, well, it's online, right? When we direct, well, go ahead and find it. It's online. It's the first thing you're going to see. And acknowledging that there are people who might need some assistance with that, that if it is online, is there a backup plan to help those who are making a phone call the good old-fashioned way, because that's how they trust that they're going to get the support. And I throw that out just as an acknowledgement that customer service really requires that we're acknowledging that everybody in our community comes from a different place, and we're here to serve them. With that, I will call for a motion to approve. I move to approve this resolution. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for your good work. May I have a resolution number, please?
Item 3C is Resolution 2025067.
Thank you very much, 067. Onto our consent agenda. Do we have anything that anyone would like to pull, to discuss, or a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
I'll move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. Appointments and reappointments, these are action items. The first is appointment of two members to the Santa Fe City and County Council on Food Policy. Jennifer Romero.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, Jennifer Romero, Community Services Deputy Director. We are requesting approval of the appointment of one county staff representative and one private sector representative to the Santa Fe City and County Advisory Council on Food Policy. The Santa Fe City and County Advisory Council on Food Policy was established in 2008 through resolutions of the city and county governing bodies. As stated in County Resolution Number 2000, sorry, 2008-5, the Food Policy Council is to consist of 13 members, including two employees of the city of Santa Fe, two employees of Santa Fe County, and nine members from the private sector, four of which are to be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Members serve three-year terms with no limitation on the number of consecutive terms. At present, one county employee is appointed to serve on Food Policy Council. Historically, county staff appointments have come from the county, sorry, from the community services and growth management departments, given their alignment with the council's priorities. The Food Policy Council focuses on senior food issues such as nutrition and local procurement of food for senior meal programs, as well as enhancement of the aggregate of Santa Fe County through improved cross-organizational coordination. Growth is currently represented on the Food Policy Council by Nate Krill, who administers the aggregate Santa Fe County program. For the representative from the Community Services Department, we recommend the appointment of Koi Mayenza, who is the Health Services Division Manager and oversees the healthcare assistance program, which provides funding and supports to vulnerable populations within Santa Fe County. She has been the liaison for the Health Policy and Planning Commission, as well as the Food Policy Council, since December of 2024. Koi has been working with and will be overseeing the Connect Network, which assists vulnerable populations with necessary supports, including access to food. The private sector position was advertised through a county press release and on the county website for 30 days. We received two letters of interest, one from Shoshana Woodworth and one from Nina Rosenberg. County staff recommends the appointment of Shanna Woodworth. Shanna serves as the Farm-to-Table Coordinator for the organization Cooking with Kids in Santa Fe. She has been participating in the Food Policy Council as a non-voting member for the past few months. We recommend appointment of Koi Mayenza to serve as the second county employee representative, and Shana Woodworth to serve as a private sector representative on the Food Council, Food Policy Council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Romero? Do we have either of the applicants in the chambers?
Unfortunately, no. Neither of them were available today.
Understandably. If there are no questions for Manager Romero, do we have?
I will move to approve the recommendations of Ms. Romero.
Let's, we have the recommendation for the action is to appoint both Koi Mayenza and Ms. Woodworth in their respective positions, so we can actually go ahead and state the recommended action in one...
Yeah, I, okay, I will move to appoint Koi Mayenza to serve as the second county employee representative, and Shana Woodsworth to serve as a private sector representative on the Food Policy Council.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Both very qualified. Thank you for putting that forward. For everyone who serves on that as volunteers, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have our appointments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Romero. Okay. Item B, a resolution appointing five members to the Board of Registration for the term July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2027, Clerk's Office.
Yes. Madam Chair, members, today we are going to be appointing five members to serve as a Board of Registration for a period of two years. So, in the memo, you'll see that the Board of Registration meets basically once every two years to remove any voter who has not appeared to vote in at least one statewide or local election approximately four years after being designated as inactive. This year, they removed a total of 3,379 voters, and in 2023, they removed 4,225. That number keeps on decreasing only because, you know, we do a lot of outreach trying to get them to update their registration, you know, there's a lot of, there's two elections in the even-number years, there's one in the odd-number years, so that number is decreasing every year. So our Santa Fe County Clerk, Catherine Clark, asks that you appoint the five members to the Board, and in the exhibits, you will see the list of qualified individuals interested for appointment. Exhibit B, you will see the section 180, which is 21434, designating all of their responsibilities. And then Exhibit C are the proposed list. So we do have the same ones that served last term. So we have two that are declined to state, Solomon Sidiyo and Russell Winslow. We have two that are from the Democratic Party, Marcia McCulak and Thomas Morgan, and we have one from the Republican Party, which is Zella K. Cox. These are the five members. We also have their letters of interest. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Green?
Just a quick question. Did we, did we get other applicants, or?
We did not. We did do a press release, and we did ask for other interested applicants, but these are the only ones that submitted.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing no questions. Do we have a motion to approve the nominated individuals identified in Exhibit A?
So moved? And I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the individuals identified in Exhibit A for the Board, for the Board. Do we have a second? Oh, we had a second. We had a motion by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Time for a break.
Thank you very much.
Chair, I have a resolution number?
Oh, good. Thank you.
Item five B, Resolution number two zero two five zero six eight.
Zero six eight. Thank you very much. Okay, let's take a, yeah, how many minutes would you like? Okay, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break? Fourteen minutes. It appears to be fifteen on this clock, so I'm going to go with a fifteen, since it gives us a minute. All right, we will be taking a fifteen-minute break and we will be reconvening at three forty-five, at which time we will take public, items of public concern. Thank you. Matters of public concern are heard at three forty-five. Do we have any members from the public in the chambers who would like to speak now for matters of public concern? Anyone who would like to speak during this time? If there are none, how many, do we have anyone online, sir?
Chair Bustamante, we have one person online.
Okay, we have a three-minute limit. And go ahead. Thank you.
All right, our first speaker is Chris Michels, our only speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Michels?
Yes, just unmuted. Yes, good to talk to you, speak to you all again today. As usual, I have, I have a list of issues to raise with you. First, I would like to say that I'm disappointed with the, with the commissioners, because even though you seem to have advanced degrees, three of you have PhDs, two of you have master's degrees, and you seem particularly devoid of critical thinking. And because, because on and on, you seem to defer to people on your staff without being willing to address things yourself. And of course, the one issue that continues to be raised by me is the fact that you're a continuing violation of the, of the information, of APRA, which is the Public Access, the Public Records Access Law, which is one of your obligations, which you seem to have no interest in following this law. You, during your, during your, your discussion of the role of the Constitution concerning the President, you failed to mention that many of these things apply to yourself, but you don't seem to wish to address that. I've heard a number of you address the, the role of the, the oath of office, which you seem to think should restrict the options of the President. Let me remind you, you also took an oath of office. You took an oath of office to the New Mexico Constitution and you took an oath of office to the rule, to the laws of New Mexico. One of those laws, which I just reminded you of, is, and which you seem to have no interest in whatsoever, is the Public Records Act. I have been waiting for records, I have been waiting for the record of the destructions given to the precinct judges since November twenty-first. And I have yet to get, to get, to get a complete disclosure of those records. And you seem to have no interest. So rather than wrapping your, the President in his oath of office, why don't you try looking at your own obligations to the oath of office? It's not only public records, you also are a continuing violation of Open Meetings Act, and you're also a continuing violation, including today, in the Rules of Order. You actually have Rules of Order. You act like you've never heard of them. They date back to 2009. You, most, most places, including Don Anna County and this and Santa Fe County, are habitually pass Rules of Order every year. You, your last Rules of Order were passed in 2009. You, not only do you have, they still exist, but you don't follow them. I've spoken with the chair about this, and she got upset with me when I, when I challenged her and provided her direct evidence from the minutes. Look at the minutes. They support the contention. You are obliged to follow the Rules of Order and you don't follow them. And the evidence is right there and you choose to avoid it. So rather than challenging the President, perhaps you should take a look at your own operations. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, we will go back to our agenda. We have heard all of the issues of public concern. We will go now to item A under miscellaneous action items. A resolution to amend Resolution twenty- 2023-067 to add a polling place and voter convenience center.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This amendment to the 2023-067 resolution only impacts this upcoming election, which would be the regular local election. So in the memo, there's six items that we're trying to amend, and these items are very logical, and they originate from leadership staff actually working alongside our temp staff, setting up and tearing down polling sites during the hottest months in June and, you know, the coldest month in November during winter storms. So I'm going to go ahead and go through and give you some insights as to why we're recommending these updates. So for number one, we're wanting to make Pawoka Satellite an Election Day site, and that's because it's already an early vote site, and it just makes sense to add it as an Election Day site. Number two, we have La Terra Fire Station, which, as you know, is very small, and so usually the night before, we set up the bell on demand stations and our tabulators in between the trucks, and then that next morning at 5:00, we have to go in there and move and basically finish setting up the site on Election Day. So we want to replace that with Unity Santa Fe, which is a church and is really close by. For number three, we want to use Fort Marcy Park Recreational Complex, which Steve remembers used to be a polling site. We currently use Montezuma Lodge, however, they have a dinner on Monday night, and even though we appreciate them feeding us, we don't finish setting up that site till 11:00, sometimes midnight, and we have to be back the next morning. So to prevent all of that, we want to use Fort Marcy Recreational Complex, and the city is more than willing to let us use that site. Number four is Mandela Magnet School. That will be consolidated, and so we will no longer use Mandela, we'll just continue to use Gonzalez Community School. And so those nine precincts will still be under the cap, so we will only use Gonzalez Community School. For number five, we will use Nancy Rodriguez Community Center, because it's already an election, an early vote site, and now we're just going to use it as an Election Day site, and that will replace El Camino Real Academy. And finally, we have the consolidation of precincts 16, 19, 157, 4, 17, 71, 165, and 168, which is a total of eight. And those precincts will now be voting only at the Galistale Community Center instead of half of those precincts voting at the Stanley Cyclone. This is also to address a high turnout election, like a general, and then a low turnout, lower turnout election, which is a primary and also a local, which is usually around 30%. So, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, Rose Angela. Did this consolidation happen the last time there was a city local election that the county handled?
So, no, this consolidation is something that we're trying to do moving forward, so we will present this type of consolidation for the next three years to make sure that we're using our resources adequately to accommodate for high turnout, low turnout, but also we want to start at this election to make sure, you know, if there are any changes, then we move forward with those changes, you know, next, next election season.
Okay, thank you. So this is like a pilot, and this only encapsulates the voting year 2025?
Yes, these changes are only for 2025, correct, for this upcoming election.
Thank you for that information. I think it might be interesting, and I hope you intend to collect some information about what sort of voter changes happened. Of course, you don't have a crystal ball, you don't know who's not showing up because there's not one, you know, because you're consolidating stations, but it would be, I think, useful for us going forward in future years to know that there was lower turnout and to hear your recommendations based on that, or higher turnout.
Yes. Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, thank you for that. We also do extensive outreach to these impacted communities via a postcard that they can put on their fridge, and then we let them know, you know, these are the polling sites you can vote. There's also an election notice that goes out 45 days before informing everyone of the polling sites, and it's just a list of all polling sites in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain on this vote, because I plan to appear on this ballot, so I just don't want to.
Okay, we're voting on voting locations, I don't know that that would be a conflict, but it's up to you. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
What is the recommended action here? I'll recommend, I move to approve a resolution to amend Resolution Number 2023-067 to add a polling place and convenience center for the consolidated precincts consisting of those listed in 6A.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a new resolution to replace the previous resolution 2023-067. What is the resolution number, please?
Item 6A is Resolution Number 2025069.
Thank you very much, 069, thank you both.
Thank you.
Our next item, item B, a resolution granting the county manager authority to negotiate the purchase and acquisition of office space in Santa Fe to support the functions of the district attorney's office. Michelle, how you doing?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am here today. Real Property has been looking for suitable office space to rehouse the DA for over a year, and as you may remember, I was here last fall, because we had found a property that we liked very much, and I received your approval to proceed with trying to negotiate an offer on purchase of that, which we were not able to negotiate. And so after that, in looking at all available listed properties and finding nothing else suitable, Real Property conducted an outside search and reached out to 50 of the most busy commercial real estate agents in Santa Fe and looked, seeing if we could find anything off-market or anything else that wasn't listed. And we found something, so actually, that's worked very well for us. We got five responses to that inquiry, and one of them has brought to us a building on St. Michael's Drive, and it is right near the new cancer center. It's two-story, 26,000 square feet, lots of parking, lots of things we like about it, lots of things the DA and her staff like about it, and we are here today seeking approval to proceed with making an offer on this building. We have $6.7 million allocated towards the purchase and renovation of the property already in place, and once we are able to relocate the DA, we have also identified new need for the existing DA's building on Sandoval to expand the function of the judicial complex. So that's what we would be doing with the existing building. And I stand for any questions.
Do we have, do we have any questions for Ms. Kaski? Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you, Michelle. This is a weird flag lot, and as I'm looking at a satellite, it has that, or the site plan, is that an access point that comes off of Arroyo Chimiso?
Commissioner Green, Chair Bustamante, no, it's not an access point. There are two access points. One, the property has both kind of a low parking lot and an upper parking lot, which is one of the things we like about it, because there will be an opportunity to have a public entrance and a private entrance, but that little flagpole, I think maybe might have been initially meant for utility access or something, but it is, it's got plants in it and stuff, so that's not how you would access it, and there's no need for extra access.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no questions or concerns, do we have a motion to approve? Do you have a question? We have a question from Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I appreciate that you've put so much effort into finding a suitable space, and maybe you could just educate me, what does the $6.7 million renovation type of money break down into? What does it pay for? To me, it seems like a lot, but I just need to know from your perspective.
Sure. Commissioner Kakari Stone, Chair Bustamante, that was the money set aside for the original purchase that we had, were hoping to negotiate in last fall, and that was a more expensive building and still required renovations. In this case, the building purchase price is right around $3.2 million. It's probably going to need more like $1.5 million of renovations, so I don't know that we anticipate spending that full $6.7, but it is earmarked for this purchase. The building has some deferred maintenance, so it needs some stucco repair, new windows, asphalting of the parking lot, some security fencing of one of the parking lots, new HVAC system, and some interior renovations to bathrooms, and just to make sure that they have the right types of office space they need inside, carpet, paint, that type of thing.
I appreciate that, and, you know, one of the first things I did think about was security, and what types of security are you adding, given today's current climate with gun violence and people entering public spaces like this, especially judicial spaces? What are you adding this time that's going to be an added value moving forward?
Very good question, Commissioner. There will be secure entry from the lobby areas into, from the public entry, so first of all, just having a public entry and a private entry will be adding security. With the need to replace the windows, we'll be able to do the bulletproof film on the windows, and then the lower parking lot will be specifically for staff, and we will be building a security fencing around that parking lot and secure access point from that parking lot into the building. And then they have some specific needs, which if they were here, they could speak to it more specifically, but in terms of their kind of surveillance, internal surveillance. And so when we walked the building with their staff, they have a whole security staff that was reviewing the building specifically to that concern, and they felt it was the most easy, out of the buildings we've shown them, the most easy to secure because of having this private and public entry and ability to direct the public into public spaces in the building, so that then the DA staff could move more freely. So it being on two levels and having multiple emergency exits and some things like this made it ideal.
Great, I appreciate that, and it's good to know that you've thought about all the security. Does the rooftop also offer an exit for safety?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, just, thank you.
Any other questions? If there are no further questions, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the authorization of purchase of this facility for the use by the DA.
We have a motion.
A second?
Have a second, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay.
Chair, I have a resolution number.
Thank you very much.
Item 6C, I'm sorry, item 6B, Resolution 2025070.
Thank you, 070, Resolution. Item C, request approval of Amendment Number 4 to lease agreement Number 2010-0165-CSDVO. This is also Michelle.
This is also me. Okay, this is in reference to a lease we have with Santa Fe Recovery Center, and specifically their facility on Lucia Lane. And this is a residential treatment center for women who can enter into either 30 or 90-day program, even with their small children, to enable them to get prepared to reenter after their drug treatment journey. So in 2010, the Santa Fe Recovery Center acquired this land, and the county put a modular building on it, and now we have a lease with them where for in-kind services, they pay us a certain amount of money every year as rent. And the lease allows, and actually requires, for us to reappraise the facility every five years and adjust the rate of the rent to market rate, and that is what this amendment does to the lease. And it has taken the value of the lease from $14 a square foot up to $16.50 a square foot, and upon your approval, we will have to submit this lease also to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Michelle? Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Michelle, and thank you to the Recovery Center for doing such hard work with this. They fill a niche for our community that is just tragic to watch, and I appreciate that there's a family-centric, women-centric facility here. You know, it's also near schools, so maybe these kids are actually able to walk to school and have some level of normalcy in their life, and I'm 100% in favor of this.
Thank you. Is that a motion? Do we have any further questions?
I will make that motion to approve Amendment Number 4 to lease agreement Number 2010-0165-CSDVO between Santa Fe County and Santa Fe Recovery Center, and authorizing amendments to Number 4 to the Board of Finance for approval.
Do we have a second? So we have a motion by Commissioner Green, we have a second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries, thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Item D, request approval of agreement 2025052-CSD with Behavioral Healthcare Services, Inc. Aye. Alex, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Alex Dominguez, Santa Fe County Community Services Department, Behavioral Health Program Manager. This item is being presented to the Board of County Commissioners to request approval of services agreement with Behavioral Healthcare Services Incorporated, doing business as New Mexico Solutions for the continued operation of the crisis triage center and mobile crisis response team at La Sala Center serving residents of Santa Fe County. The agreement term is from June 29, 2025 through June 29, 2026, with total compensation to the contractor in the amount of $960,000, inclusive of New Mexico gross receipts tax. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2014-143, the total contract amount requires approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Background, Santa Fe County first entered into a multi-year agreement with New Mexico Solutions in 2021 to support behavioral health crisis services. Since the inception of La Sala Crisis Center and the accompanying mobile crisis response team, service levels have steadily increased. In their first year of operation, fiscal year '22, they had 650 client interactions; in fiscal year '23, 1,534 client interactions; and in FY '24, 2,320 client interactions. As of May of fiscal year 2025, they have had 1,638 client interactions. These figures reflect both in-person crisis services at La Sala Center and mobile response services throughout the county. Over the past four years, New Mexico Solutions has demonstrated strong performance and an adaptive collaborative approach, working closely with local hospitals, behavioral health providers, and county entities, including the Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue, the Regional Emergency Communication Center, and the Adult Detention Facility. New Mexico Solutions has continuously refined its programming to meet community needs, expanding into behavioral health education and early intervention strategies that go beyond immediate crisis stabilization. The vision of the County Services Department- The vision of the County Services Department is to ensure that all county residents, regardless of income, have access to high-quality healthcare and are connected to the resources they need for health and well-being. The La Sala Crisis Triage Center aligns with this vision by offering a safe and accountable space for adults in behavioral health crisis and their caregivers to receive compassionate assistance during crisis episodes and leakages to community-based services. The total compensation under the proposed agreement is budgeted through the Community Services Department Behavioral Health Funds, cost center number 223-0495-467. The recommendation is to approve agreement number 2025-0352-CSD between Santa Fe County and Behavioral Healthcare Services Incorporated, doing business as New Mexico Solutions, in the amount of $960,000, inclusive of New Mexico gross receipts tax, and delegate authority to the county manager to sign the purchase order. Madam Chair, Commissioners, before we move on to questions, discussion, or comments from the Board, Dr. Lay and Ms. Kate Field are here with us today. If it pleases the Board, they would like to present a brief PowerPoint summary of the services at La Sala Center over the past four years, or we can go into questions.
Alex, I believe that we would be grateful.
Excellent. Dr. Lay?
Thank you for having me, Commissioners. Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce Kate Field. Kate is the Crisis Services Director here in Santa Fe, longtime Santa Fe resident, and one of the reasons why the Crisis Center is the success that it is. I have some information for you. I don't want to inundate you with a whole lot. I do want to acknowledge the Crisis Center is funded by Santa Fe County, but also receives funding from New Mexico Medicaid and New Mexico non-Medicaid funding. I do always want to say, we really treasure the relationship with Santa Fe County Community Services Division. In my 25 career, 25-year career, this is one of the best funding relationships I've ever had. It is collaborative, effective, focused on the right things in terms of serving the community. So it is a joy to be able to be here and continue to work with you. La Sala Crisis Triage Center, I don't want to go through the whole timeline, but a few things to point out to you. This started in 2017 when a county gap analysis identified the need for some kind of crisis center. The RFP was released, my agency, at the time we're based in Albuquerque, submitted a proposal, were selected. In that period, New Mexico Medicaid also recognized the need for Behavioral Health Crisis Center services and committed to funding Medicaid to Behavioral Health Crisis Center services. So we didn't want to create an operation that wouldn't then be able to access Medicaid funding. So we spent the next couple of years partnered with the county and the state developing what crisis triage center services should look like. We started operations in '21 in kind of the heart of the pandemic, and I'll show you some numbers here in just a moment. One thing to note on here, we have, last year, we started opioid use disorder outreach services. That was funded actually by the state. We also started assertive community treatment services here in Santa Fe under a contract with Community Services Division because our crisis center services had identified that many of the people we were seeing repeatedly had really severe chronic mental illness, and we were seeing them repeatedly because they didn't have good wraparound services. One of the things you may note is that our numbers have actually gone down a little bit from '24 to '25, and that is because by starting that ACT program to take care of these very intensive folks, we siphoned them off so that they weren't in crisis as much, and we're now receiving more ongoing services. I will note, this is a lot of numbers for you. AI did the best it could to make this look pretty for me, and it kind of gave up. But I will point out, you know, look at the month of October 2021, and we saw 60 people that month. We're now seeing, you know, in recent months, 120, 136, 84. Those numbers have gone up year after year, and we continue to see more people. This is just a graphic depiction, but it really shows the continued growth year after year of the services. Lastly, I want to point out, several other crisis center, crisis triage centers have started in other counties and communities in New Mexico. The one here in Santa Fe remains the most successful. Others have closed. We've never closed. We've remained continuously open, continuously serving individuals. Alex gave you some of the numbers to date, but this also shows where folks are coming from. The majority of them are coming in from the public. We do have a robust partnership with City of Santa Fe Fire Department, Police Department, and County Sheriffs, as well as County Fire. One thing I will just quibble with a little bit here, some, you'll see that the numbers of referrals from the hospital seem low. Please know that many people come to us now instead of going to the hospital. So the ideal is for them to be diverted to us and never end up in the hospital. Is that fair, Kate?
Very fair.
Lastly, just a little bit about the services we provide at the Crisis Center. Anybody that walks in the door is going to be able to access case management, peer support, crisis de-escalation, nursing counseling, substance use intervention, medical care. We do a fair bit of medical management, navigation to services. We are partnered with Santa Fe County and the Unite Us platform to assist people in accessing ongoing tract services. We provide psychiatric assessment. And because people in Santa Fe County have such difficulty accessing ongoing psychiatric care, we are providing ongoing medication management for folks in crisis until they can get into ongoing medication management so that it doesn't trigger another crisis. Before doing this, would you mind, would you mind sharing the demographics on the folks receiving?
Of course, Commissioners, Chair. The demographics we had started to collect regarding city residents and county residents are as such. For your information, clients with a city address equaled 42% of our clientele over the last three quarters. Clients with a county address outside of the city limit, 17%. Clients who are unhoused, 34%, which is not a surprise. And then there's others who might come from out of state or passing through.
We just started collecting those numbers in partnership with the county, so we'll be able to report those more robustly in the future. We are going to be partnered with the CCBHCs, and I don't know if you're aware of that. It's a Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic model, new to New Mexico. Santa Fe Recovery Center and PMS are going to be standing up as CCBHCs in Santa Fe County. We will be partnered with them. When we started this in partnership with the state, we believed that a significant percentage of the people walking in the door would be Medicaid eligible. Turns out about half of the, what we were expecting were Medicaid eligible. So we've now partnered with the state so that our Kate staff can do presumptive eligibility for Medicaid, put people on Medicaid if they're eligible, so that they can not only get services from us, but get ongoing medical services in the community. Finally, one of the things we've been struggling with over the past year, and basically all providers are, is the hiring workforce issues in terms of particularly hiring therapists. Luckily, with some additional funding that we've gained access to and some changes in our Medicaid revenues, we're going to be revising our payment strategies for therapists in just a month or two. And we hope that that will solve some of the hiring issues that we've had that have impacted some of our access at the center. I stand for questions. Thank you again, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We really enjoy this partnership.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, oh, let me get back to the... Sorry, my screen is loading. It seems like, and this is kind of back of the envelope math, that you all see about 10 to 12 individuals per day in the 2025 thus far, which leads me to believe that you're on track for seeing over 3,500 patients. Is that accurate? Is that math correct?
We see on average between four and 12 to 15 people a day. Our capacity is a little lower than that 15. The space gets pretty crowded. One thing to know is that we do see repeat customers, repeat clients that come in. So some of those numbers are not unduplicated.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I had the opportunity to tour the facility with Commissioner Kokari Stone. I was very impressed by Kate and her team. And I think this is an extremely important service. It's a model, as you mentioned, for other communities, and I heartily support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I agree. Keeping your doors open, being a model as opposed to the peer service models that had to close says lengths about perhaps leadership and positive implementation. I definitely think there's a growing need, and I fully support, you know, this resolution for this contract of services. I'm just curious, it seems like the greatest percent, and it's good that we're self-referrals. And maybe you can't answer this, and we could ask the warden, but there was only one referral, and I thought, I was just curious about that one referral from the detention center. And is there more coordination that needs? Is there just not a crossover? Just thoughts?
Commissioner Kokari Stone and Chair, I think that the relationship with the reentry is dependent on the particular staffing that they have and that we have, and finding the right timing and inmate that might come to us for services. I think that that number is actually not accurate. I think we do see a lot more, and we're always fostering that relationship.
I appreciate that, and I know that the warden, as well as the county manager, have all discussed the coordination across services. And I, can I assume you guys meet on a regular basis? And, okay, terrific. And I look forward to when there's time to learn more about the cross-coordination with your services in the courts. I just had one other insight, and the 34% that are unhoused, do you see that possibly increasing? And to what extent are you able to offer people a stepwise approach to some sort of intermediate housing once they leave the recovery center?
Commissioner, thank you for that question. I do anticipate that number to grow. I don't foresee a whole lot of available resources in our community that might support our particular population. Generally, that would be identified as severe mental illness population. We're not seeing a lot of transitional or permanent supportive housing planning coming in. I hope that we do in the future. We have very close relationships with the shelters, of course, in our community, as well as in Taos, and Espanola, and Albuquerque. However, the resources are not nearly enough, and that is one of the daily struggles that our staff experiences. And bringing that to resolution and the housing trajectory can take some time. It can be 12, 18 months to really get someone housed, so.
Our team was successful the other day.
We speak to the microphone.
Our team was successful the other day, Madam Chair, Commissioners, with an individual that had been coming to the Crisis Center, was transferred to our ACT team so that he is getting wraparound services from our served community treatment program. And they were, I think they'd been serving him now for about six months. They were able to get him housed. He's been homeless for the past four years. So it takes time, but it does happen. But we have to celebrate even those individual successes.
Yeah, I agree. Build on success and what's working. And, you know, I just look forward to further collaborations and support of the efforts around looking for options for people without housing, with severe mentally ill diagnosis or interactions with substance use. I think we really need to keep talking about this as a team, and I'm looking forward to working more with Commissioner Hughes. And I know the city's very invested as well. And I understand in talking with the county manager that we could even tap into more use of our mobile crisis in terms of going to where people are, now that we're going to have some of these micro-communities through, even though the city's providing it. But how could we think deeply of offering some onsite type of assessment, onsite wraparound case management? I think we need to pull together our county resources and what we do well with what the city's doing, and not overlap, but to complement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, and then Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I'm glad to see your services have increased. I know at the beginning, we were a little worried that not many people were accessing it, even though we knew there was a need, and so I'm glad they found you. I was wondering, are you threatened by the cuts to Medicaid? Do you think that's going to affect your funding and the people's funding?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yeah, it keeps me awake at night. The, I sit on the Board of the National Council for Mental Wellbeing. It's a DC-based organization that advocates for community mental health nationwide. We're involved really closely. What I'm predicting right now is going to be the greatest impact is that people will roll off Medicaid. The periods of eligibility will be shorter. They'll have more headache and paperwork to stay on Medicaid. So it's going to be work, more work for Kate's staff and our team in Albuquerque, because every time we see somebody, we're going to have to make sure they're on Medicaid. And if they're not, we're going to have to work to get them back on. Luckily, that's the kind of work we do a lot. And for people in behavioral health, we actually see them a lot more frequently than people see their medical doctor. So we're able to oftentimes catch that they fell off Medicaid before other folks do. So definitely, we are planning how to deal with this amidst the chaos of not knowing exactly what's coming down the pike.
Okay, well, that's semi-good news, I guess, that you can get them back on Medicaid if they fall off. Yeah, and I intend to work with Commissioner Kokari Stone on creating some housing options for some of the people who are unhoused. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the work you do. It's amazing how many different organizations we need to support, you know? You do a big, heavy lift, but there's so many people surrounding you, and you can't do it alone. So you mentioned that 47 or some upper 40% percentage comes from the city. And don't get me wrong, they're all Santa Fe County residents. I'm wondering, does the, but you didn't show in your funding program whether the city supplied you with funding?
We don't currently receive any funding from City of Santa Fe. Kate's team does a lot of collaboration with them. We've had conversations with them about potential funding opportunities over the years. Nothing ever materialized.
Okay, that's disappointing, but, okay. And then are you working with the court systems on diversionary programs? So, you know, keeping people out of jail, is there, is that, I think that's being stood up more and more, but maybe it's already exists and you have some vision on where it's going?
Thank you, Commissioner Green, Chair. We have founded relationships with AOC to start talking about the AOT program and how we might support, particularly through mobile crisis. And we regularly receive referrals from the Public Defender's Office in order to keep people out of jail. It feels like a very natural fit as far as our timing and access points. It's been great.
Great. Good to know. Thank you very much for working on that aspect as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I also want to commend your good work and understanding. I have shared with the manager a number of times that I have actually had constituents who've reached out to me, and one individual who really thought his son was all but lost, and said, "You have to keep these folks," and that was his direct order to us. So very grateful for your good work. Sincerely, lives are changed and protected because of the work that you do. Do we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Yes, Chair Bustamante, I make a motion to approve the agreement number 2025-0352 between Santa Fe County Behavioral Health Services, oh, yeah, and New Mexico Solutions, the amount of $960,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from, so we have a motion from Commissioner Kokari Stone, a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for your good work.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item D, approval of agreement 2026-0351IT between IT Connect and Santa Fe County to provide remote security and security monitoring services. to provide remote security and security monitoring services. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel Sanchez with the IT Division signing for Jeff Espinoza, who cannot be here today. First of all, just a bit of housekeeping. The agreement is actually going to be 2025-0351-IT. We start the contract in fiscal year 26, but we submitted in fiscal year 25, so a bit of confusion, so it is 2025-031-IT.
Noted, thank you.
So we are requesting the use of the New Mexico State Price Agreement to procure cybersecurity professional services with IT Connect, who has been a partner with us for some time. And also asking for delegation of authority for the county manager to sign the purchase orders. With that, I stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Hearing no questions, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve agreement number 2025-0351-IT with IT Connect for remote security and network support services in the amount of $600,000 exclusive of NMGRT and delegate authority to the county manager to sign the purchase order.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes.
This is a point of order, just to make sure that we're doing, it's 2026 or 2025?
2025. He stated that it was 2025 and that that wasn't correct. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Item F, a resolution to commit Santa Fe County fiscal year 2025 fund balance. Yvonne Nareda.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, is this, yep, it's on. Resolution 2019-7, attempts to establish reserve levels to address the predictability or unpredictability and volatility of revenues and expenditures, one-time costs such as disasters and immediate capital needs and dependency on the general fund by other operating funds for resources, contingent liabilities and economic downturns. With today's resolution, we are requesting the board to commit fund balances as of June 30, 2025, in accordance with the county's current reserve policy for the general fund, special revenue funds supporting county staff and ongoing operations, enterprise funds and the county self-insurance fund. For those reserve requirements that identify a percentage range of the unrestricted fund balance from the prior, from the prior year financial report, there were no changes. The calculated committed amounts are in addition to any fund balance requirements or constraints imposed by law, contract or other sources outside of the county's policy. Exhibit A to the resolution presents the calculated committed amounts for each applicable fund based upon the current reserve policy as detailed in the memo and the calculation. The county is currently working with GASB to replace the current policy with the new risk-based reserve analysis and policy draft is expected to be presented to the board in August. The approval of this resolution will not limit the board's ability to adopt a new policy in August and make any changes deemed necessary to the amounts committed, committed for the county. And with that, Madam Chair, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Yvonne. Do we have any questions? Ms. Nareda? If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve a resolution to commit Santa Fe County's fiscal year 2025 fund balance.
Do we have a second from?
I second it.
We have a second from, we have a motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Kokari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Yvonne.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for making that easy today.
Thank you. All right. On to item G.
Chair Bustamante, I have a resolution number?
Oh, yes, a resolution number.
Um, 2025-071.
071, thank you. Okay, item G, request approval of one agreement, number 2025-0275PWTJ, construction of Santa Fe Rail Trail Segment Number Six and Cerro Alto Trailhead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. Excited to bring forward the construction services for Santa Fe Rail Trail Segment Six and the Cerro Alto Trailhead. This is a recommended and approved through the BCC of a capital outlay project. Our funding sources include the lodgers tax, two funds of capital outlay, GRT, a Trails Plus grant, and finally, we have a Department of Commerce, EDA reimbursable grant that we have a part of it. Our total budget's around 3.2 million for this project. The trail itself is a 1.78 mile crusher fine trail that will extend from Spur Ranch Road where the current rail trail segment five ends. It will proceed along the railroad right of way. We will go on to the Common Wheel Conservancy Land and follow the New Moon Overlook Road along the hillside there, finally crossing over the state land office and terminate with the new trailhead on the Santa Fe County property, which is adjacent to US 285 Highway. The location of that, if you know, that is right across the railroad where Cerro Alto Road goes down into Lamy, hence the Cerro Alto Trailhead. Make sure it's a geographical location. This was procured through an IFB. Meridian Contracting Inc. was the lowest, most responsible bidder. Therefore, we are requesting approval of agreement 2025-0275 with Meridian for a full contract price of $2,470,589. That's exclusive of NMGRT. That bid includes base bid plus contingency. And we're also asking for delegation of signature authority to the county manager for signing off on the purchase order. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just wondered, are all the neighbors of the trail in agreement with this plan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, yes, they are. You know, we worked long with one private citizen over there for trying to keep it off of their private property and try to get it below their eyesight. We feel we've done it. We've talked with them. They approve of what we have accomplished. We do have the one person up there right on Spur Ranch Road that we will work with because they've had a social trail where a lot of the horse riders use. They're wanting to do some, you know, divergent and get those people off. So we're going to try to help formulate that out and take care of it within our scope.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question. So am I to understand this is the final segment for this trail?
Madam Chair, no, it's not.
It is not?
It is not. We still have segment seven that will take us down into Lamy. We're dividing it up into two phases. So currently I'm working with procurement office to procure the engineering services because we've got to get across above or below US 285. We can't do an aggregate crossing. So currently we're trying to get that under contract and try to get full construction docked. So as we finish up this segment, what that'll do is get us over or under and then down to County Road 33 and that'll be the end of phase seven A. And then seven B, we're hoping we can do a road project in combination to get us into Lamy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve agreement number 2025-0275PWTJ, construction of Santa Fe Rail Trail Segment Number Six and Cerro Alto Trailhead. And of course, et cetera.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item H, a resolution to delegate the county manager authority to negotiate for workers' compensation coverage for fiscal year 2026. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. With me today and to support and present workers' compensation is Eric Martinez, the safety coordinator. HR and Risk Management Department request the Board of Commissioners to approve the proposed resolution supported by memorandum detailing the Hub International Insurance Broker's Proposals for Workers' Compensation Insurance for FY 26. In your packet, we have detailed information regarding the six options that Hub evaluated from New Mexico County Insurance Authority and three options from New Mexico Mutual. Hub provided the analysis of the different options evaluated and has indicated the best financial option of New Mexico County Insurance Authority of $100,000 deductible with a premium of $446,269 and expected retentions of $347,397 for an expected total of $820,666. The $100,000 option has the greatest potential for savings on a low year end without taking any materially risk intent, retention, sorry, of a higher. Also remaining with the county, New Mexico County's Insurance Authority provides a long-term benefit to the county by ensuring continued stability and success of that joint power agreement entity of which the county is a member and upon whom it depends on other coverages, for which there is not much of any commercial insurance market. Therefore, HR and Risk Management request the Board of Commissioners to approve the subject resolution delegating the authority to the county manager to negotiate for workers' compensation coverage for FY 26 and execute purchase orders, agreements and other documents necessary or advisable to effectuate such coverage with the direction of the county manager to select the $1,000 deductible option from New Mexico County Insurance Authority. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jagles-Moquino. Do we have any questions for Melinda? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt six H, resolution to delegate the county manager authority to negotiate for workers' compensation coverage.
We have a motion for Commissioner Hughes. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kokari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a resolution number, please? Thank you both very much.
Resolution number 2025-072.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item six I, request approval of the Affordable Housing Agreement for Turquoise Trail Commons.
Thank you so much, Chair Commissioners. Today I come before you requesting approval of the Affordable Housing Agreement for Turquoise Trail Commons, also known as the Dominion Development. Just a little bit of summary, the preliminary and final plan for the development of five parcel mixed-use subdivision on approximately 27 acres will be approved administratively upon approval of the Affordable Housing Agreement. Section 13.2.2.4 of the Sustainable Land Development Code does require the board to approve and execute the Affordable Housing Agreement. The property is located at 4608 New Mexico 14, within the Community College District, Employment Center Sub-District. Under section 13.2.1.1 and 13.2.1.4.2, the applicant exit 278 LLC, an unusual name, would typically be required to pay a residual fee. However, in this particular case, the residual fee will not be required to be paid because what the developer has opted to do is to produce a 312-unit apartment complex fully affordable. It is a mixed-use. All the units within the apartment complex will be income restricted to tenants earning at or below 60% of the area median income at time of initial occupancy. In accordance with New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority, a qualified allocation plan, rents for these units will not exceed 30% of the applicable income limits consistent with the QAP. In this particular case, we definitely recommend approval. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, in addition to the 312 affordable housing apartments, what is the rest of the land going to be used for?
There's another parcel, Commissioner Hughes. It is commercial and that has not been determined to date. However, I am scheduling a meeting between our economic development staff and the current property owners to move forward, to make recommendations for that particular parcel.
So there's no other housing, other than the 312 units, right?
It's all housing and, and, and the other piece will be some sort of commercial development, correct?
Commercial, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Denise. The, the range here, it, I can't quite make heads or tails of the affordable dwelling range, but in the agreement, it seems to not add up to 100%, so I'm trying to fit, make, make a little bit of, what percent are going to be at that 120 to 80 to 120? Or is that not all set up yet?
Thank you, Commissioner Green, for the question. These units will be 60% of the area median income and below. So this is an all affordable, low-income true complex.
And then the spectrum of the size of the units? Are there any one bedrooms and studios or are they all multi-bedrooms?
It, it's a mix. It's a mix of, I believe, one, two and three. That's what the discussion is currently today.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Do we have additional questions for Ms. Benavides? If there are no additional questions, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Agreement for Turquoise Trail Commons.
Second?
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Denise. Okay, very good. Presentations, we have two presentations today. Item seven A, follow-up presentation on release transportation processes at the adult detention facility. Thank you. Okay, Wade, are you, you're the presenter today?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having us today.
Thank you for your patience in this meeting.
I'm going to present on the release and transportation process and options for the adult detention facility inmates. This is a follow-up to our last presentation where we kind of indicated where we were in the process. This is going to cover the advancements we've made to this point. In summary, we're going to cover the increased access to the transportation offices. This is done through ADF providing regular transportation services during those heavy release times. We're able to make a round trip about every 30 minutes. We're working with the North Central Regional Transit District to provide my blue service to ADF. This is a course pending their board approval. Potential rides through Presbyterian Medical Services that are being explored, the public transit vouchers and Roadrunner and Santa Fe Trails that's currently being explored through the walking down the highway, how we've created safer passage for those that choose to walk with the provision of reflective vests, funding plan to design and hopefully construct the offset trail along Highway 14 within the existing right of way, which is included in the county management's proposed capital budget. New Mexico Department of Transportation and the evaluation of better signage down the road. And also, finally, the education and customer-informed services. Transportation education, what we've implemented through our intake and release procedures now. Surveys of current and former inmates have been used and will be used for future changes. And I'll discuss a little bit about how we plan on implementing those as well. So currently in the realm of transportation, these are immediate actions that we were able to take. We have focused on the improvement of the release process and have made some strides to educate about their transportation offices. Options. Officers are assigned currently right now from the hours of two to 10:00. And they're located with the transportation vehicle now available, sitting outside the door. We're still using the current drop-off location, which allows us to get every 30 minutes on that turnaround time. During the weekends and hours that aren't During the weekends and hours that aren't identified from that 2 to 10, that eight-hour timeframe, we have very minimal releases during those hours, and so we're still doing it as requested for the transportation. And also on the weekends, and we've got the stats to support that, and I'll bring those up here shortly. The cost to the county is we are having to assign an over-timer to cover that eight-hour period because it is in our, currently in our staffing pattern. Comes at a cost of about $81,000 per year to man that eight hours by our staff on overtime. We're also working with Public Transit is also still available at the current times, but we are exploring some other times, and we've got some things that we're working with RTD to improve more public transit options as well. When it comes to the walking, we've implemented a new safety initiative. We went with the recommendation of reflective vests, which we provide upon release. So currently our process, anyone that announces to us that they intend on walking, we are actually supplying them with the vest at release. We also understand that just because they say that they have a ride, oftentimes they get out to the parking lot and find either the ride hasn't arrived yet or the ride never did arrive, or whatever those plans may occur. Then we also have put reflective vests located just in the lobby in case they have a change of plans. Oftentimes, they like to start walking in order to meet their ride at the allsupps or meet them in transit down to the allsupps. So those reflective vests are made available in the lobby, free of charge, obviously, for those that intend on changing their mind. We've then added the signs in both English and Spanish at key locations. One, exiting the booking right at release. Then there's that Breed's Way on the exit door out where we've also placed a sign that they see it immediately on release. And then likewise, we've placed the sign in the lobby where the reflective vests are located, indicating that they are free of charge, and if you do choose to walk, we recommend that you take one. On top of that, our staff have actually become more aware of the situation. I wouldn't say more aware, but we've just had heightened engagement. They're encouraged to interact with people when they see them waiting outside for a ride or whatever, whatever the case may be, offering them additional phone calls to ensure that the ride is still coming, get some kind of ETA on that, or encourage them to get onto the transit, or even if there isn't a van waiting during those hours, those peak hours, and we find someone, we'll make additional calls, do whatever we can to go out of our way to assist them in an option other than walking. These are some of the data that we're collecting. I ran it, the data that's presented to you was started on 6/2. You got approximately two weeks and two days up there. We keep this data. We're still running this data. I will have this data updated as frequently as y'all would like. What we're collecting right now is currently the date. You can see that there's the day of the week. I put that up there to indicate that you can see the minimal volume that we're talking about on Saturdays and Sundays for our releases. We got the released, we got the total releases, and then we separated two times. That late evening and early morning, we separated those times out so that you can see that our primary volume is during, um, regular, at 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That center column up there is any individual that still falls under our release count but may not have been released to the community. Those are individuals that we either have to transport, maybe they got sentenced to the penitentiary, so we're making those transports. They're coming out of our facility. They have other charges in additional facilities that we have to transport them out that will reflect in our release counts as well. Or if an individual medical deems that they need to be transported to the hospital for safety reasons, those individuals will be collected in that column. The next column over is anyone that we, I'm sorry, those columns are switched. The column I just talked about was transported to an alternate location. The middle column up there is the ones that we are actually transporting. So having the van readily available outside the release area is reflected in about 83 total transports in this two-and-a-half-week period. If you remember from our earlier presentation, we had 70 transports in a quarter. So we're making a big impact by having the van readily available. And what we found early on is people were saying, "No, I have a ride," or "No, I plan on walking." And as they walk out and the van's available, they were like, "Well, wait, can I get on the van?" And we're like, "Yeah." So we're having a drastic impact on that by having just the van available out there. We've already surpassed the entire first quarter with just two weeks of transports doing it that way. The column that's labeled "Had a Ride or Walked", we were trying, we were making an attempt to say, "Yes, these are how many that walked, and these are how many that actually had a ride." It becomes kind of difficult to distinguish that data. What we know is we didn't transport them. They indicated that they had a ride, and we're assuming that maybe they hopefully did have a ride, but if they changed their mind, it's kind of hard to separate those two. What we do know is those that indicated that they were intending on walking. If they indicated that during the release process, we marked it down under that column that they accepted a vest. We haven't had anyone refuse the vest, actually, that said that they intend on walking. So, um, we had about 45. It comes out to about 15% of all our total releases indicate that they still plan on walking even with the available transportation. The last column there is we had about three people that made it out and got onto the RTD Blue Bus because they wanted transit specifically to, uh, the Railrunner. Also, what we did too, one is we wanted to conduct kind of an internal survey, which was discussed. For us, we have a bigger survey planned, but this initial survey for us, we wanted it to serve twofold. So what we did is we implemented the survey during the intake process. So it wasn't just a release that we were telling people about the available options. It was actually during their intake or classification process very early on of them arriving to the jail. What it allowed us to do is be more kind of proactive to informing them from the beginning that there's available transportation that the facility is willing to offer. It also gave us the opportunity to let them know that, um, these, if you're between this 2 to 10 timeframe, that eight-hour timeframe when the biggest volume of releases are, that if they're just going to, if they're just willing to wait 30 more minutes, a van will be there. And we, so that was more of a proactive approach to informing them of the options. Likewise, we wanted to collect and analyze some data that would inform us on anything that we could see, uh, in the future and how effective what our current plans that we implemented were and what kind of the sentiment was towards the plans that we were implementing. These are the five questions that we asked. Are you aware that the facility offers transportation upon release? That was able, that was simple. It allowed us to get that entry way into it. When you get released, we were asking them, "Are you planning on getting picked up? Are you going to walk, or do you need a ride provided by the facility?" The percentages are up there on these. If you choose to walk, would you like to wear a reflective vest? We wanted to know if this was even an option that they wanted to do or were willing to do, or if we were going to find, we were handing out vests and then just finding them thrown on the highway down the road. After you get released, would you be willing to wait up to 30 minutes? It was kind of our lead-in to let them know that once you're released, if you can just wait 30 minutes, the van's going to be back, and we will be able to make that transport again. And then, are there any other locations or drop-off? This was something that was a write-in. Our officers wrote it in for them. We got a wide range of, um, answers. They were fairly sporadic, but these are just three of the common answers we got. One, could you give me a ride straight to my house? Two, could you give me a ride to the allsupps? I thought it was kind of surprising that the only ride you were asking for was the two-mile walk to the allsupps. And then the other one was, "Can you give me a ride to Albuquerque?" That was our furthest-out request. And we'll talk about how we plan on attempting to address those things as well. So these are the things that we're actively still in the process of pursuing. Transportation timeframes. We talked about how we're able to do this turnaround every 30 minutes. Our current stop location is located at Camino Entradas, uh, right there across from the police station. The Zia Station is another option that we're considering. It adds an additional 10 minutes. It kind of puts you in the other direction, kind of the east side of Santa Fe. It's still closer to the south side, but it'd be the southeast versus the southwest, kind of getting a different location, maybe alternating. We did look at dropping off at the Sheridan. That, uh, that adds a lot of time, and unfortunately, we're afraid that what we would do is end up being too long between transits that people would stop waiting for us since we're generating success out of this 30-minute turnaround. We did hold some meetings with RTD or the Blue Bus to explore future partnerships, opportunities, potential services. The My Blue Bus, the couple of regional plans. The county commander, uh, county manager was able to set up some good meetings that we got some good explorations through there. Again, they're pending their approvals, staffing, some other hurdles that they're going to be jumping through. The My Blue Bus, it's going to be kind of like an Uber service potentially for that area. Those are going to help solve some problems as they get through their process. Presbyterian Medical Services have extended their hours. This kind of worked twofold for us. It allows us to get that continuum of care that we're always seeking from the facility anyways into the Presbyterian Medical System. They extended one of their workers' hours till 6:00 PM. They're still kind of exploring some transportation offs, uh, options from their end of if they've got an appointment, can we transport? Can their employees transport directly to them? That's some things that they're exploring. We've been working in collaboration with HR Legal, um, Community Services to explore the development of maybe a new volunteer program that's aimed at addressing the transportation needs across the county. This could solve as that cross-functional. It could help with both the senior services during the day and then maybe augment or supplement some of the transport needs that we have during that 2 to 10 area for us in the evening. We've met with LifeLink. LifeLink, uh, is a good community partner for us. They're going to help us develop and conduct a third-party survey that's designed to gather information on individuals both pre and post-release. So it won't be just people located inside the facility that are planning getting out. We're hoping that they're going to be able to follow up with individuals after release to see if, uh, the sentiment or the recommendations may change post-release. We're also going to utilize that survey to not only assess the transportation needs, but we want to also use, take advantage of that to see if we can assess more of the community service needs and maybe develop some better linkages in that system as well. Some additional strategies that are being explored is we could contract services out to augment the current facility transport times, or maybe even take over the facility transport times through a contract service. Provision of public transportation vouchers for the bus and train tickets. We're in the process. Again, the county manager was able to get a contact for us. We're in the process of scheduling out something to discuss how we go about purchasing vouchers for both the Railrunner and the Santa Fe Trails Bus System, which we're hoping that the Railrunner will help us with that long-distance request of, "How do I get to Albuquerque?" So that's, uh, process, that's in the process that we're working on. We looked at potentially like an automated call system that maybe if an individual opts in, they get a contact, and upon release, somehow it automatically sends a text notification to their point of contact that this individual's getting released, just so that maybe family members are aware if they miss a direct call that they can read a text, "Oh, he got released," and maybe they can come and pick them up en route. That's a little bit more difficult. There isn't anything out there that we found that exists like that, but it's worth exploring. The development of offset walking trail along New Mexico Highway 14 from the adult detention facility. This trail's going to connect all the way to the Railrunner on 599 and to the nearest trail system right there, kind of by dinosaur, the dinosaur trail area. This would improve the pedestrian access to connectivity to the public transportation and community resources. Initial funding is included in the capital budget recommendation as indicated earlier. The last option that is potentially on the table is we potentially look into hiring FTEs to fill that transportation role that we are currently filling through overtime. This would reduce the cost of the overtime. That's a little bit more challenging as that we're not, we're always sitting around one or two vacancies of our mandatory posts that we're trying to fill constantly. So it is an option that we could explore. At this time, I open it up to the Commission for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Deputy, uh, Deputy Warden Ellis. I also just want to point out, and I won't be bringing them to the podium to speak, but we did have a request from an interfaith worker justice group. So Reverend Holly Beaumont is actually in the chambers, who I will invite you to discuss at another time of the services that they provide and have experience with given, um, release, post-release. She can share the details with you. So I just want to make you aware that you do have some support in the room and people who'd like to discuss things further. Additional questions? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Warden, Deputy Warden. I just want to give a shout-out to you and county management and everybody that's been involved in this to address this as fast as possible. I can't say if everything's perfect, but you're definitely trying to resolve it in, in a very dynamic and innovative way, uh, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Warden, Deputy Warden. Like Commissioner Green, I appreciate the, uh, quickness of your response and coming back to us with data is really helpful. Couple of questions. I'll be, I'll be quick. The Blue Bus ride on June 3rd seemed to be the only time that that, um, occurred, and I know that the My Blue Service to the Adult Detention Center has not been rolled out yet, but it will be. What accounts for the three? Was that just a sort of happy coincidence, or?
So, so they do have a scheduled stop time, so they come and it's around, I'm trying to remember, about 4:45 or 5:15. It's one of those two times. It just happened to be a group out. But what we found is, um, when we release them in groups, because we're trying to get them in groups so that we're not overcrowding these vans, what we find is if one gets on the bus, all of them are like, "Oh, yeah, I'm going to just ride with these guys." And so they all tend to pick the same option, even though the Blue Bus was available. They still choose to ride with their peers. And so when one gets on there and they're like, "I don't want to go to the Railrunner. I'm just going to go all the way into town," then the group tends to be, it's, it's kind of a group think. They all tend to travel together. And so once that option became available, it's not that the Blue Bus isn't there. Those individuals that went on the Blue Bus specifically were looking at getting linkage to the Railrunner, whereas everyone else was very excited to ride together.
Okay. Good. That's interesting to know. How, do, does someone being released get a phone call in advance? And how, how, I imagine they do, but how long pri, uh, prior to their release do they get that call? Because it, it does take about 45 to half an hour to get to the.
So oftentimes, our biggest releases are coming from the court system. So a lot of times, they know that they're going to be released, and they're making those phone calls prior to us being able to process them out. Once we get them into the booking area, again, we're allowing them to make a call. That's some of the staff engagement that we tend to find most frequent is they come out knowing that they have a ride coming. Are they going to wait for a ride? And then we're usually pulling them back into the lobby area, getting them with the front desk to make a secondary call to ensure that that ride is still en route.
Okay. So they're at liberty to call, um, knowing that they're, they're going to go through booking to be processed out of the facility? Is that right?
Yes.
Intake survey is a good idea. Intake surveys are a good idea, and I think that is smart to prime them for that. So I just wanted to make note of that. I support, and I imagine this commission would support vouchers for public transit. It's already a very inexpensive service, but I think that extra help when you're, you know, leaving a situation that you need a little bit more help with would be great. I'm intrigued by this automatic call system too, just to have an emergency contact point of contact to inform people because it seems like some of the issue that occurred with the unfortunate deaths was that no one really knew that they were being released in the first place. And so when they walked, right, they're sort of, it's at night. They're sort of, they're on their own, and if someone knows, right, they might meet them halfway. So I think that's worth doing. You know, I think about appointment software, things like that. But anyway, I applaud your creativity and thinking through these problems.
Just to bring that up, you just brought up another idea that I think we're going to start exploring too, is calls from the facility. If y'all have ever received a call from a county phone, usually come up as four digits or sometimes looks at scam calls and people don't recognize it. A lot of times, they don't get people to answer. I think, just thinking about the way you posed the question, just kind of got my brain spinning. Maybe we could look into a text, maybe an option where they can send a text because individuals will read a text maybe and not answer a call that's from an unfamiliar number.
I think we all do that. So, yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I was just making an add to this. We have a justice meeting with the magistrate court, which we, you know, all the defense counsel and prosecutors also attend. In recent communications, one thing we've asked is, or I've asked is, that the defense attorneys let us know anytime they're making a motion for a release or they know that, particularly for people who have severe mental health illnesses or homeless issues, getting them to send correspondence to our reentry team as soon as they know that. That way, we have a little bit of time before we get a release order. So that way, the reentry team can then start working with the resources we have in the community to try to help provide that connection to them in the community before they get released. So hopefully, that'll be in addition to this too.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Warden. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Deputy Warden Ellis and Warden Williams, I just want to commend you. It's a sign of hope when you activate yourselves and you activate with others to find solutions together. And I think I just really wanted to say that hope and finding solutions is so apparent tonight and it was different from when we were talking about the people who have died. And so I think that we're moving forward. And would you consider it a success? Now, I don't know the numbers before, so I appreciate the data you pulled with all the different options. And not knowing the numbers before, I'm adding up that there was a hot, in this time period between June second and June seventeenth, there was a hundred and sixty-six rides or people choosing to use a reflective vest as a result of these new strategies, which would mean a fifty-six percent spike in offering options. Is that, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually are improving by over half, right? So would you consider that a success?
Absolutely. We were always offering the rides, but I do feel that just the ride being outside, them seeing it is changing their mind and making it a more viable option. I think this has been a huge success on that end.
Yes, thank you. And then in your slide on other strategies that you're thinking, what do you both think is the most promising of that list of strategies?
I'm going to flip to the list here. On the additional strategies?
Yes.
Madam Chair, me personally, I think the FTE request at the bottom is probably the most prominent only because having, as the deputy mentioned, having that two-to-ten vehicle and that transport officer readily available to get them has made great strides. Having an FTE, and I will add, I don't envision that position being an officer position. So, you know, that would make a big difference too as far as the difficulty to fill. But I think that would be a huge cost savings to what we're incurring now with the overtime and still accomplish the availability of having that readily available transportation form.
Thank you so much. And I had just two reflections. It seems like when we went with you in May to the facility and when Commissioner Johnson and I went again as new commissioners, there was a high use of the iPads by all the inmates. Is there maybe a creative strategy that will tap into them always on their iPads and that would give them media options to engage with a ride?
So they are able to send messages through those tablets. Another creative strategy that, when we were talking about sending out a third-party survey that wasn't necessarily coming directly to the jail is we're looking into actually implementing that survey, a more in-depth survey through the tablets as well that will allow the vendor to collect that information and then send it back to us. Obviously, there's potentially endless. It's just a matter of that is a contracted service and what options they allow on the tablet is kind of on them. It's not free range. They very well vet it. It doesn't go on to the internet. It goes through another server that they own and then they're able to filter the information that comes in and out through those tablets. So it's just a matter of what is the idea that we're looking at and can they accommodate that without reaching any kind of security risk on their servers?
Understood. I hope that that's a potential option. And then it seems like peer-to-peer really matters and peer preference matters. And with people choosing options and behavior change, it seems like the amount of time where certain options would be normalized and then you can systematize it, might be, you know, I don't know, six months to a year. But I hope that normalization of increased uptake of getting a ride will increase based on peers. And I just thank you for mentioning that because it seems like that could also be an option for some solutions is that peer. And I would appreciate that you actually implemented a survey to include those most impacted in the solution. I think that's really important. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no other, thank you very much. I also echo the good work. You jumped on it and you've got some plans. So thank you. And you're tracking what's already implemented. I'm very grateful for your work and look forward to hearing the successes and hearing that there are no problems on Highway fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you both, Warden. Okay, we are on Item B, Presentation on Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Budget. This is a presentation that will be continued on Thursday if deemed necessary. So if we have a lot of questions today, it is my hopes that we can keep questions that can be delved into more deeply on Thursday, for Thursday. Otherwise, Yvonne, you're on. And actually, it's both Manager Schaefer, Leandro, and Yvonne Herrera. So thank you, Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. As the Chair indicated, this really is some stage setting for a deeper discussion that we're going to have on Thursday at a special meeting. So I'm going to be exceedingly brief in terms of the information that I'm providing. It's really to help orient the Commissioners to upcoming discussions about resource allocation. So I really wanted to accomplish the following goals during this brief highlighted discussion. One is just a level set relative to the availability of debt financing for capital projects. Discuss a little bit the pros and cons of self-funding versus borrowing for capital projects specifically as it relates to revenue bonds. Talk at a high level about significant recurring and non-recurring resources and then, you know, set the stage for some future discussion relative to the infrastructure capital improvement plan in relation to those resources and unknowns. And then also just provide a high-level summary of how county management was thinking about approaching this year's capital budget process. You know, this is an itemization of some significant capital and maintenance resources that are available to the county. They include general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, capital outlay, grocery receipts tax, the first one-eighth, hold harmless grocery receipts tax. That's currently dedicated to the road maintenance fund, as well potentially as the general fund, which would be uncommitted and unaside balances should the board choose to use them for capital purposes that are not used for affordable housing and associated capital needs. State appropriations are also a not insignificant source of funds to the county as well as federal and state grants and congressionally-directed spending and community project funding. So just a reminder, general obligation bonds are required to be approved by voters. They are actually repaid using property taxes that are levied specifically for debt service. What that means is general obligation bonds provide resources that would not otherwise be available but for that voter approval because you're not using general tax revenue. But again, property tax revenue that is specifically dedicated to debt service. Revenue bonds are repaid from pledged revenues only, so it's not backed by the full faith and credit of the county and its property tax owners. But instead, a revenue stream, most often grocery receipts tax. It could also be system revenue for utility bonds are pledged to repay specific debt. So when you look at potentially funding capital, you know, self-funding, meaning you're saving over time for a big purchase versus using revenue funds, you know, there are benefits and disadvantages to, you know, both. Benefits of self-funding is that, you know, you earn investment income while funds accumulate. You reduce interest expense because you're not borrowing money and you can preserve bond capacity for extraordinary capital events. Also doesn't constrain future policymakers and it provides you with flexibility with regards to recurring revenue. You know, some of the disadvantages of self-funding, which are not insignificant, is it may take too long to accumulate adequate funding. So if you're setting aside, you know, ten million dollars a year for a big water project, for example, you know, that means you're, you know, potentially having five years to accumulate fifty million dollars in order to allocate to that project. Whereas issuing revenue bonds, you know, allows you to receive those funds at one time when they might be most needed relative to the capital needs of the community. There's also an equity component in terms of how you pay for long-term assets. And, you know, debt allows those assets to be available earlier to current taxpayers, whereas accumulating funds over time means that, you know, future users, you know, get the benefit as opposed to current users. You also have the risk of potential price fluctuations as well as inflation risk in terms of self-funding capital improvements. So in looking forward, what we're trying to present to the board is, you know, five-year look forward in terms of what resources we anticipate being available through some of these main resources. Capital outlay, grocery receipts tax is the largest single source. If you start with the beginning uncommitted fund balance and then you project forward what we anticipate in terms of revenue through fiscal year 2031, that sums to approximately ninety-four million dollars. As noted, there are certain assumptions that are included in those revenue estimates. As I'll mention in a second, we do anticipate that a revenue bond might be advisable in order to fund significant water and wastewater infrastructure improvements. And if the board were to adopt that strategy, we would anticipate that that debt service would come online in or about fiscal year twenty-seven. We also have debt that is expiring in fiscal year 2030, which is, you know, why you see that estimate go up at that point in time. Hold harmless grocery receipts tax, at this point, we're pledging that primarily to support the road maintenance fund and we anticipate that will continue for the foreseeable future. But there are uncommitted fund balances in the hold harmless grocery receipts tax fund that could be used for maintenance or for capital projects. Assuming that the fifty-fifty split between the lodgers tax facility fund and the lodgers tax advertising fund continues, you know, that would yield the stated amounts in terms of money that would be in the lodgers tax facility fund to support, you know, potentially open space, trails, what have you, other potential tourist facilities and attractions. And looking forward to 2031, that sums to about nine million dollars. When we look at non-recurring resources, which, you know, again, is debt financing, you know, it might be a little bit of a misnomer to call the general obligation bonds non-recurring because voters tend to approve those when asked. But nonetheless, they're not a sure thing and the principle comes in large amounts when approved by the voters. Working with our financial advisors, we believe that there's approximately, or we estimate, thirty-five million dollars in general obligation bond capacity that the voters could authorize in 2026 at the general election with an additional thirty-eight million dollars in estimated capacity at the November 2028 general election. So just a reminder, the way we structure our debt is that we try to keep materially stable debt rates on property tax over time. So even though this is, again, additional capacity, we think will be available as our property tax base grows, we try to issue the debt approved by the voters so that the actual property tax levy for general obligation bonds, again, is materially stable over time. So as old debt is retired and paid off, new debt is issued to meet the capital needs of the community. We looked at potentially a capital outlay grocery receipts tax revenue bond using two-point-two million dollars in annual revenue from capital outlay grocery receipts tax. Depending upon where we borrow that money from and assuming we could obtain near-zero-interest rate financing from the state, you know, that would yield approximately fifty to fifty-five million dollars in bonds for water and wastewater projects. Some of the major ones that the board is aware of and has, you know, committed funding to include the Pawnee Basin Regional Water System, the internet or the interconnect, excuse me, between that system and the Santa Fe Basin, the return flow pipeline in order to maximize utilization of existing BDD infrastructure as well as San Juan Chama Project Water that is unused and reclaimed through the water reclamation project, or excuse me, systems of the city. And then finally, we are, you know, moving forward with significant expansion of the so-called Quill Water Reclamation Facility, but also all of the infrastructure that will take additional wastewater to that plant for potential reuse in a variety of ways. Finally, you know, looking forward to known and identified needs, we are planning and recommend that the board self-fund some of the preliminary engineering and design and programming work for a significant remodel and expansion of the adult detention facility to help make it better suited for its current use, if you will, in terms of being a very large behavioral health facility as well as, you know, a medical and detoxification facility. Obviously, when the facility was constructed in or about nineteen ninety-seven, the needs were much different in terms of the clientele than they are today. So again, looking forward, the existing debt service for the bonds that were issued to build the current facility, those bonds will mature in February of 2027. And so that will free up revenue that could be replledged, if you will, to new bonds to fund that expansion and remodel. So we also, you know, have estimated not insignificant funds. So we also, you know, have estimated not insignificant funds in the fire operations fund that we would anticipate leveraging to meet the needs of the fire department in terms of facilities as well as maintenance. We'll be talking with the board in the upcoming months, both as part of our affordable housing discussion as well as youth behavioral health center, you know, what additional resources could be available in the EMS Health Hospital, Indigene Hospital, and Healthcare Assistant Program Funds. So again, these aren't included in this presentation and that's the reason why is we think that they're more appropriately dealt with on a standalone basis, looking at the behavioral health needs that have been identified in the youth space as well as potentially providing additional source of resources for permanent supportive housing and associated services that are necessary to support users of those facilities. So as we think forward, you know, to future meetings where you consider what goes into the infrastructure capital improvement plan, you know, want to, you know, reposition that as a true planning document as opposed to a, you know, potential list of projects that we don't necessarily have the resources to complete within a five-year, you know, planning horizon. As you think about what to put into the ICIP, the things that I wanted to highlight is that, you know, for any project, costs aren't firm until you have a construction contract and you're actually putting the project into the ground. And as projects are, you know, developed, the estimates, you know, become more firm. But again, it's still plus or minus, not insignificant amounts in terms of certified, you know, engineer estimates as to what a project might cost. We have a significant amount of projects on the books that are at various stages of development. I think when you look at the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget, again, these aren't new resources. These are resources that the county has accumulated over years as projects have been identified and money has been allocated to them. We're carrying close to $235 million worth of, you know, projects. If you take, you know, a rough, you know, estimate and assume that, you know, the cost associated with those projects, you know, might require, you know, 40% over and above what's been allocated, that gets you almost to $90 million just to, you know, complete those projects. Again, that's just a ballpark way of thinking about it. And then when you think about some of the investments that the board is, you know, already making in terms of the pipeline of projects, if you will, that was referenced earlier in the specific context of the CDBG program, you know, some of those, you know, projects as they're developed in the pipeline will come at a not insignificant cost to complete them. So I just highlighted two examples, you know, there'd be many others that you could go through the list and look at. But as we allocate funds for, you know, site acquisition and design of a replacement regional fire station for the Aguafria District to replace the existing station that, again, is beyond its useful life, you know, you could anticipate, again, plus or minus, construction of a modern facility to house the apparatus and our regional crew could easily be in the $10 million range. And if that's something that's going to be prioritized by the board, you'd want to be anticipating that expenditure in the tail years. Likewise, you know, San Ysidro Crossing would be another example. You could look at, you know, potential low water crossings along County Road 84 as well. Again, I just, you know, highlighted these as representative. We could go through every single district and find projects that sort of demonstrate this point as you invest in preliminary design and engineering work. Again, to get those completed within a reasonable timeframe, which we're looking at five years, will come at a significant, you know, significant cost. So we also wanted to highlight that there are a variety of planning efforts that are already in the works. These were just a few examples. They include water and wastewater study and master plan for La Cienega and La Cieneguia Water Utility Master Plan. There's also a transportation safety study that is ongoing in the La Cienega area or is about to get kicked off. And then finally, we have a wastewater reuse plan. So again, active planning efforts that will generate their own potential timeframes that the, or excuse me, projects that the board may want to consider funding within the one to five-year time horizon. So generally speaking, and we'll go into this in greater detail on Thursday, but we did have some projects that we identified as likely coming to construction or to a construction contract in the next fiscal year that we recommend adding funds to either by reallocating funds from completed projects or allocating new resources to them. And then we anticipate, again, that that would be spent over the next fiscal year to make sure that the next well-defined phase or the complete project can be done in a timely manner. We also recommend, you know, a select group and there aren't very many on the list of new projects. The one that the deputy warden and warden spoke of, which, you know, I understand to be a priority of the, of the board, is to look at how to make a safe passage from the adult detention facility to, you know, New Mexico 14 and 599 and the trail infrastructure that is otherwise being constructed to go south. We estimate, and it is just an estimate, that that trail will likely cost approximately $2 million. Again, that could be higher. Don't think it will be lower. That's based in part upon the contract that the board just approved for a similar trail for rail trail segment six. But we'll work through that as the, as the design is done, should the board fund that project. Obviously, that helps our constituents who are being released from the jail, who choose to walk to provide safe passage. It also provides a broader community benefit insofar as you would now have an offset trail that could be used for biking as well as walkers on that scenic byway. You know, there are included in the packet material a variety of preliminary engineering design or feasibility studies that the board, you know, could look at and determine whether or not you want to allocate resources to those at this time. Again, recognizing that, you know, we're looking to try and build a plan for the next one to five years. And so investing in that preliminary work now, you know, could help develop a project pipeline that could be funded in the out years as we get firmer numbers and the board can make cost benefit analysis as to what's a priority for some of those potential projects. As indicated, you know, I think that, you know, we should be planning, that there's a high degree of likelihood that revenue bonds would be an advantageous strategy for the county to pursue in order to meet major infrastructure. I talked about the critical water and wastewater infrastructure. You know, some of that could be funded through general obligation bond debt if the board decided to go in that direction. You know, we're recommending planning on some revenue bonds simply because those are must haves, you know, not, you know, nice to haves. And while the voters have supported the county bond issuance consistently, you know, those are things that we want to make sure that we're able to fund in a timely manner to continue to build out our critical water and wastewater infrastructure. And then finally, something that's, I think, for a variety of reasons, is more appropriately funded through revenue bonds would be the expansion and remodel of the adult detention facility. So as you get through and as we talk about on Thursday and at future meetings, how we would, you know, potentially allocate resources as we did last year, we don't recommend that every available dollar be allocated to a specific budget or project at this time. That's because while the estimates from engineers and other design professionals are becoming a little bit more accurate, you still have to say that they're plus or minus, you know, a certain percentage. So in other words, despite our best efforts in terms of estimating what the cost might be, it is quite possible, as was the case this past year, that additional funds will be needed to actually allow a project to be constructed that the board has prioritized. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, resources are available in those instances should the board allocate that additional funding so that we're not caught in a, you know, a cycle where we go out to bid on a project, the bids come in higher than the money that's allocated for the project and you have to wait until future years and revenue becomes available or you try to redesign a project and all the while, costs continue to rise. So these are all the attachments that are included in the packet material, may augment and update Exhibit G between now and Thursday, but I'm not going to go through this in detail really at all, other than to identify what we included to prime that conversation on Thursday. But I wanted to give you an overview of conceptually what we thought the revenue would look like in the next five-year planning horizon, provide you with an index of what information is included to have a robust discussion on Thursday. And then again, give you at a high level, at least how we started to think about, you know, where resources might want to be allocated during this fiscal year. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. But again, this was a high-level overview to help prepare us for a more detailed discussion on Thursday, but also to hopefully give you some useful information as the ICIP is discussed with the board. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Are you amenable to answering any questions? And you can say we'll be getting into this more on Thursday if you like.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has, you know, for me. But again, I had assumed, just as you said, that we would be, you know, really getting on the project level, what have you, on Thursday and at future meetings. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any preliminary questions for the manager? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. We're going to wait for you to get to your seat and then we're going to say, do we have any items from the county manager?
Just to remind the public and the board, we do have a special BCC meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 9:00 AM to further discuss the capital budget as well as potentially ICIP projects. And then finally, we've scheduled a second special BCC meeting on these same general topics for July 10th at 9:00 AM. Again, subject for, to the board's determination of whether or not that second meeting is necessary. Finally, we will be doing a robust public outreach on this topic, but I wanted to alert the board to the fact that our fire marshal will be issuing an order that bans open burns beginning this Friday, June 27th, until future notice. You know, what that means is that permits that had been issued for open burns will be suspended during the pendency of the fire marshal's order and that no new permits for open burning will be issued during this period. So this is, you know, taken in response to or in light of the fact that a large portion of Santa Fe County lies within or near the wildland urban interface. In addition, current weather notwithstanding, we anticipate that we're going to continue to experience hot, dry, and, you know, unstable conditions that will dramatically increase fire potential. Again, the U.S. Forest Service has already enacted stage one fire restrictions across the Santa Fe National Forest and there are multiple wildfires actively burning across the state. So this is an effort to prevent an open burn from getting out of control and creating a situation that, you know, taxes resources but also puts property and life, you know, at risk. I would just underscore that, you know, as we face these potential conditions, that we recognize that there are a lot of other, you know, ways in which fires can begin. They can be as innocuous as pulling a car that's been running off the road into dry grasslands. That's been known to create a, you know, rapidly expanding grass fire to even, you know, welding or doing work around your home near, you know, fuels that are dry. That created, Chair Bustamante might recall, that was the source of a rapidly expanding grass fire that happened in the winter down in the Stanley area. So again, the risk of such events happening is real and they can get out of hand very quickly. And so it's just incumbent upon us all to make sure that we're doing everything we can to minimize that risk. And that's all I have relative to updates. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Manager Schaefer. Next on our agenda, we have matters from the county commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Justin Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has been moderately busy. Last week, I went up to Espaniola to take part in the Department of Transportation's discussion of the Onyate Bridge closing. This bridge is not specifically in Santa Fe County, but it does get very close and connects across the Rio Grande into Santa Fe County. And so I thought it was appropriate for me to be up there to hear what the prognosis is for the bridge. And it does serve a number of people in Santa Fe County every day. So the short of it is, they don't know. They're going through an assessment right now and there are three scenarios. There is one fix it. There is one tear it down and do not replace it. And then there's the third version, which is replace it 100%. I have opinions on this and I just won't bring it up here, so. But they do need that bridge. It's a critical link. We've been working actively on an animal welfare summit. I've mentioned this before. It is going to be July 25th to 27th. I hope you all attend and get excited about it. If there's some topic that you would like to have included in it, please send it over. We'd love to have it included. The Friday of the show of the conference will be a bunch of roundtables and professionals in the area that will discuss different areas. And we're going to, we're going to handle things from, you know, how the pueblos can work together to deal with, handle their own strays and animal, animal control to how we need to expand our workforce for veterinarians across the county and the region. Culturally, onto the cultural side of things, I was, I went to the Exodus Ensemble's new show. That was really good. I don't know if you've ever gone to an Exodus Ensemble show, but it is phenomenal. This is one of the coolest things that we've managed to sustain in Santa Fe in the past few years. And this is a great new theatrical ensemble that is based here in Santa Fe. Their new show is based on Cyrano de Bergerac. It is a modern interpretation. Modern interpretation is a little loose because it actually is based on the concept that you are going back to your high school reunion from 2010. And it is really every emotion in two and a half hours. It was one of the best theatrical events I've seen in a long time. The same day, it was, it was Theater and Arts and Culture Day for me. I got a tour of the Dark Winds production. It was really cool. It was sort of action moment and, you know, they, I was there for a couple hours and they showed me how things were sort of the behind the scenes sort of thing. It was really great. Want to congratulate the Dark Winds team. They are going to wrap their fourth season later this week and we can keep our fingers crossed that they get recruited or signed up for another, another season. There was Tzuski Pueblo Feast Day. I think I might have mentioned that, but somewhere, but that was wonderful and want to thank the pueblo for hosting that. And then this past weekend, Chimayo had one of their fiestas and car show. And of specific note from that is in the car show, there was an EV, EV from 1917.
No.
Yeah. And I got to ride in it. So that was like the coolest thing, you know, for me. Yeah, EV, yeah, no doubt. And so it was so cool. It was from the Detroit Motor Company from 1917. It was very cool and it resides up in Chimayo. It still works. It drove there and it drove back and it drove back to their house with me in it as a passenger. No steering wheel. No steering wheel. You steered it with a tiller, and you had another gear or accelerator with another thing. No pedals, just for brakes. It was very cool. Anyway, that's everything for me from now. I really appreciate this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes.
Yeah, just a few things. Like to mention that the Pride Parade is this Saturday at 10:00 o'clock, and I'll be participating with the other El Dorado Democrats, but anyone can join us. If you're not from El Dorado, you can still, still join us. The BDD, Buckman Direct Diversion approved some repairs, so we're at least moving in that direction, fixing that plant. Toti Mortalero is retiring from RTD. He's been the director for like 20,000 years. I don't know, no, 20 years. But he has really built the RTD up to what it is, but he deserves to retire. So I'll be attending that on Thursday, his retirement meeting. Commissioner Kakari Stone mentioned this earlier. We did meet with Jamie Cassett, Councilor, City Councilor Jamie Cassett, to talk about supportive housing and other cooperative efforts to address homelessness. That went well. And finally, Greg and I met with Representative Shipansky, and one of the things that came for me with that was how we present to them things we want them to fund. And so I have some good ideas that I will share with you, and Greg heard them as well. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. I'll be brief. I just wanted to use this time to reflect on this, get on the bus and defend girls' legacy to be in sports, led by the former Governor Martinez. And I just want to stand for the rights of gender nonconforming, gender identity, not what you're born at, not your sex that you're born at, to support transgender, gender nonconforming girls, women of all continuums to be in sports. But what we saw earlier on the Santa Fe Girls, Inc., is that it's so important to support all kinds of girls, and not to use this as an excuse to draconianize transgender folks as we are. And Gay Pride Month, when we talk about human rights and laws and why policies are important, I just want to say, I stand with the county and with my fellow commissioners, and continue to be have a community of inclusion and a community that supports and does not in any way, and we have zero tolerance for transgender hate. I just think that's a really important time right now. And I'll just focus on practicalities. Our Northern Rio Grande Northern Heritage Area Committee, we had our finance committee this last week. Other services was our Santa Fe Swama Joint Powers Committee, was, I think, a productive one that many of the other commissioners sit on. It was positive to move forward with Councilor Cassett. She brought some ideas to the, to the table, but it's really time to reinvigorate cross-sectoral and to really kind of push leadership on some positions moving forward on a continuum of options of people who are homeless. So I look forward to that engagement. And then today, I wasn't able to go because of our meetings, but the Executive Committee of the State Legislature for Behavioral Health Reform and the new funding was today. So I look forward to our county and myself as well being engaged in planning our regional area and see how we can leverage some of these funds for timely issues. And finally, having worked for former Ted Kennedy as a fellow, the Senator Kennedy, not the current Kennedy, I was very honored, and it's a privilege to, to learn at every stage of your life. On Monday is my last day at UNM. I'm very excited. And, you know, I get choked up because it's a career of service, but I feel so blessed and honored to be doing this public service and to have some more pause time to really dedicate... Excuse me, I didn't think I'd get choked up. But it was, it's been 25 years of work, and to have some pause time to really focus deeply in this public servant role. And I know it's been a year since we ran and campaigned, and I'm, I was honored to be accepted to the Harvard Kennedy School Executive Leadership Program and Policy Implementation. Those resources are coming not from the county, but it's an opportunity to continue to learn. And as JFK once said, "Don't ask what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." And I deeply believe in this importance of continuing learning, as many of our county staff showed earlier, all their training programs are doing, but that I continue my training to deeply build the capacities to both develop and implement very effective policies that really serve our communities. So this was a program that brought together over 30 representatives globally from 12 different countries, from different sectors, some from city councils. And the trainers are Harvard faculty, but many of them have worked for the World Bank using a model that really looks at effective policy implementation. So I look forward to applying that. We finish up in September, but again, bringing those skills and opportunities, I just wanted to share, that's what I've been sort of busy with. It was a boot camp, and I came back sick, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have too much, so I'll keep it brief. I attended the No Kings protest last weekend, which was well-attended. I also attended, as I mentioned before, the protest, sort of in... What is the right word? The protest protecting public land that was in coordination with the Western Governors' Association, which was held right across our parking lot, I found the words. I went to both with my daughter, who's seven, so, you know, I wasn't on the front lines. But it was really great to see Santa Fe's community come out, and in sort of different capacities. One, to protest tyranny, and the other to try to mobilize support, bipartisan support, I should say, for protecting our public lands, our, our open spaces, our public spaces, our, you know, diverse ecosystems, especially in the American West, which, you know, once they're gone, they're gone. And they're at, under threat from extractive private industry primarily. It's, you know, a lot of these sites are very remote. It's not condo developments. It's mineral extraction. So we're seeing a lot of those in Santa Fe, and I hope to see, I've seen a couple of you out there already, so let's, let's keep, let's keep showing support for our constituents. Commissioner Hughes mentioned that Anthony Mortalero is retiring from the NCRTD. One of his many achievements is the completion of a facility in Taos, so not in Santa Fe County, but an operations and maintenance facility in Taos that will serve the northern regional trans, central, North Central Regional Transit District as a, as a hub. And I will attend the opening ceremony tomorrow, so I really look forward to that. On that note, I do want to acknowledge that there was a shooting on the blue bus, and it appeared to be a targeted event. But I was, though it's a horrible act, heartened to see the immediate response from that group to address safety concerns, to increase the comfort and security of riders on the blue bus. And then finally, in my own cultural events world, I help throw the Canyon Road Summer Walk, which will have its second event on July 2nd. So from Paseo de Peralta to Palace Avenue on Canyon Road, it's largely closed. It's pedestrian-only, sort of like fairly to walk in the summer. Bring your kids, bring your adult friends, bring your grandmother. Everyone is welcome. There's tons of live music, tons of food vendors and stands and trucks, art activities. Galleries will be open. And let's hope it does continue to rain in Santa Fe, but just not from 5 to 8 on Wednesday next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a very brief presentation or discussion. What I want to share is to just remind people of the free days at BERT. The first Saturday is coming up. All first Saturdays are household hazardous and electronic waste. It's very important that those are managed properly, as well as, excuse me, Saturday and Sundays, green waste unbagged, and eight tires are allowed for free tire disposal, so you can start dismantling those things you've made out of tires. Don't put them in bags. All right. So that's all I have to share with everyone today. Excuse me. So do we have any other elected officials who'd like to provide comment? Thank you.
Chair Bustamante, I do not see any elected officials online.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will go into executive session. County man, sorry, county attorney.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, it is time for us to go into executive session, and I'm informed by Manager Schaefer that we will not be discussing Item 2 identified in Section 11 of the agenda, that is, the performance evaluation of the county manager. So limiting ourselves to Items 1 and 3, I would be seeking a motion to go into closed executive session to discuss threatened or pending litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant under Section 10151 H7 of the Open Meetings Act, and to discuss the two items identified, 1 and 3.
I'm sorry. Do we have, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I will make the motion to go into executive session stating that we will only cover Items 1 and 3 of the agenda as presented by the county attorney.
I second it. We have a motion from Commissioner Green. We have a second.
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in.
We need a roll call.
We have a roll call, I know. All right, we have a, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was getting your documents ready. Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Yes.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Yes. We are now... We are now.
Commissioner Green?
Madam Chair, we'd like to come out of executive session stating that we did not discuss anything other than Items One and Three as stated is the reason to go to executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are back in session.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, as a follow-up to what we discussed.
Yes, Item B on the executive session.
Item, yes, exactly. So, we have, I would like to make a motion that the county agrees to waive the potential or actual conflicts of interest in connection with the law firm of Spencer Fain, LLP, representation of Christus St. Vincent Medical Center related to property tax dispute with the Santa Fe County Assessor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, but we have a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, public hearings. We have a public hearing on an ordinance approving a community energy efficiency development, CEE block grant, and this is an action item, and we will have... Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am not Will Donahue, as stated in the agenda. I am Jacqueline Beam, Sustainability Manager with the Community Development Department, and I am here on behalf of Will Donahue and the Sustainability Division to recommend the adoption of an ordinance that will allow our seed grant agreement to go forward and enable the implementation of a county-administered seed program. On July 29th, 2024, MNR awarded Santa Fe County $835,000 in seed funding. The county's seed program will be administered in alignment with its existing home rehab and energy efficiency, or HRE, program. Households may be eligible for one or both programs based on need and income level. On May 27th, 2025, county staff presented the seed program overview to the Board of County Commissioners and received approval to publish the ordinance title and summary. The required legal notice was published in the Santa Fe New Mexican on June 5th, 2025, satisfying the statutory minimum 14-day notice period, and no comments have been noted. The Seed Block Grant Act requires counties or municipalities to enact an ordinance formally approving the seed block grant and adopting the associated grant terms and conditions. The proposed ordinance fulfills the statutory requirement and will allow Santa Fe County to proceed with accepting and administering the grant award. And with that, I stand for the public hearing process. Any questions?
Thank you, Jacqueline Beam. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak to this matter, both in the chambers or online? No one in the chambers, anyone online? Do we have any questions for... It doesn't look like Will at all. It threw me completely off, and I almost, it's like, what the heck? Any questions for Jacqueline? If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt an ordinance approving a community energy efficient seed development block grant from the New Mexico Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department, and to authorize the county manager designate to sign all necessary documents to accept the CEED block grant.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, a second by Commissioner Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Although it's a roll call for an ordinance.
I'm sorry, roll call. Sorry about that, Ms. Beam.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Bustamante?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have another public hearing presentation on the fiscal years 2027 to 2031 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, Growth Management, Max Hendren.
Good evening, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. I am Max Hendren in Growth Management Department. I am the Capital Planning Team Leader. The Capital Planning Committee, and I want to thank you for this time to present the Santa Fe County's draft fiscal year 2027 to 2031 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, the ICIP, and then the Board of County Commissioners can conduct the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing will be held on July 8th at that meeting, or a special meeting to be held on Thursday, July 10th. The Board will be asked to adopt by resolution the final fiscal years 2027 to 2031 ICIP. So, the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, it's a vital short-to-midterm planning tool that helps Santa Fe County identify, prioritize, and align the capital projects with the county's strategic goals and our available funding sources. The ICIP is not a funding source, nor a grant application, nor should it be considered a wish list. It should be a structured plan that supports the county's capital budget, legislative advocacy, and grant application processes.
Per our resolution 2019-103, the county established a formal capital planning process supporting the Capital Planning Committee and the Board in annually complying prioritizing capital projects. On October 8th, the Board adopted Resolution 2024-133 approving our current fiscal years 2026 to 2030 ICIP. That is Exhibit B in your packet. This ICIP covers a five-year planning window. It prioritizes projects that are based on feasibility and need. It aligns with county goals and our available funds.
The ICIP is adopted by the Board annually via resolution and submitted to the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. Our ICIP is shared with New Mexico Elected Delegation to support capital outlay funding requests, and the ICIP informs the broader capital budget planning, but it excludes fully funded projects. The Santa Fe County's fiscal year 2027 to 2031 ICIP is due to the DFA
is due to the DFA by July 11, 2025. So, the CMO and the committee have made some macro observations about the Santa Fe County's ICIP. Our ICIP may have become both under-inclusive and over-inclusive. Under-inclusive in that it does not reflect all of the county's planned, partially-funded, and prioritized capital projects, partly because projects were removed from the ICIP when they were thought to be fully funded. As an example, the presentation that was given earlier by our CMO in Finance on the proposed fiscal year 2026 capital budget, Exhibit A from that presentation, displays projects that were removed from the ICIP because they were thought to be fully funded, yet they continue to have funding gaps. When I look at it, I see La Sala, Avenida Vista Grande, Avenida del Sur, Arroyo Hondo Trail Projects. Continued inflation and price volatility have led county staff to reconsider when a project should be considered fully funded, perhaps. This should happen only after construction contract has been executed. So, adding back to the ICIP, these projects with funding gaps would give a more accurate and complete view of the capital planning. This method would also offer our legislators additional projects for allocating gap funding. For example, Senator Harameo could have been presented an option to fund the complete furnishing of the Abadon Lopez Senior Center, had it remained on our ICIP. The furniture is being self-funded by the county. County staff will work to identify these projects for potential inclusion on our ICIP before the next ICIP hearing. On another note, the ICIP might be over-inclusive because it includes too many projects, some of which the county does not expect to start within that five years due to current projects and available funding sources. The current ICIP also has early-stage work like preliminary engineering reports and assessments that, once completed, will determine if a project is feasible and identify these potential costs. These early-stage reports help decide if an idea should become a project and provide a timeline for that implementation. County staff suggests that this early-stage work not be included in the ICIP. Instead, they should be tracked separately and funded with county funds. More to come. So, public engagement, it's the cornerstone of the capital planning process, and to inform and gather feedback from our stakeholders, staff held two virtual community outreach meetings. One was on February 26, and the other was held on April 22. In addition, on March 25, staff briefed the Board on the capital planning process and gathered feedback for improvement. The Capital Planning Committee convened to review, score, and recommend updates to the ICIP in accordance with the adopted capital planning process. Exhibit G in your packet provides all of our scoring criteria that was used for capital projects. Committee's evaluation of the new project request is displayed on Exhibit C, and it includes all the considerations from the scoring condition, criteria. The committee reviewed each new request and identified the phase of the project and how shovel-ready it is for implementation, and scored these projects accordingly. The committee considered whether the project addresses a basic public need. They considered available leverage funding, and evaluated how the projects align with the county's strategic goals to have a healthy, safe, and sustainable communities. Also, the committee reviewed the departmental capacity, capacity to implement a project and move them forward. Contained in Exhibit D are the projects the committee recommends removing from our current fiscal year 26 to 2030 ICIP, or the new projects recommend that they don't be added to our ICIP, either because the project is identified or defined, that defined face is funded or underway, or the project is a study or preliminary engineering report. So, the projects on this Exhibit D that are in green letters are the new projects that we don't recommend be put on the ICIP because the county's going to fund those. And then, of course, the rest of them are surveys, for the most part. So, also, there were some new projects that were scored, yet the committee recommends some of these projects not be included in the ICIP because they're self-funded. The committee also recommends the studies and the PERS be separated into a dedicated list. That's Exhibit E. And we want to prioritize and assign a budget using county funds that will be determined by the Board. That way, those potential projects can be assessed in future capital planning cycles. Finally, as indicated before, county staff recommends that projects that are currently underway and partially funded be added back into our ICIP. There were several new project requests that were reviewed by the committee and not recommended for inclusion on the ICIP, nor for county funding. Those projects are listed in Exhibit H. The whys vary, but include reasons like new project area is included in a study, and once completed, could identify potential infrastructure projects, or the project request is on private land, it's not owned by the county, or the road is not a county-maintained road, or that request is not consistent with existing county policy. Those are all the conditions that need to be addressed before they are added to our ICIP. In addition, staff did meet with Los Colindrinas, Madrid Water, and the Canada de los Alamos requestors to kind of give them other options for their projects, their priority projects. But kind of, it's their initiative, for instance, a Madrid Water Mutual Water Consumers Association. We set up a meeting with Newmark, our North Central New Mexico Economic Development COG, and New Mexico Environmental Department, to try to provide them the capacity to move forward with their own ICIP process and keep these important projects moving forward in their own arena. We will reach out to all of the requestors and give them reasons maybe why we didn't move forward with some of these projects. Okay, so let's call our attention to the draft fiscal year 27 to 31 ICIP. It's Exhibit F. In this list, we are all the projects that will continue to be a priority from fiscal years 2026 to 202030 ICIP, and they're not recommended for removal. There are also the new projects from Exhibit C that have been incorporated in here. Exhibit C, they've been incorporated. The list of projects is prioritized based on basic need, yes, no, and the score, and the highlighted in green are the top five top-ranked projects from fiscal year 26 to 2030. So, between now and July 8, the July 8 Board Meeting, the committee will review the feedback from this public hearing, finalize the list, and highlight the top five projects for inclusion in the fiscal years 27, 2027 to 2031 ICIP, and recommend approval of the Board by resolution. At this time, I want you to also notice that the estimated project costs and funding gaps on the draft ICIP list have been excluded. Between now and the second ICIP public hearing, county staff will add that information based upon updated estimates, the potential of adding new projects to our list, the allocations of funding, and other information. So, in conclusion, the purpose of today's meeting was to provide information on our ICIP and gather valuable input from our community. I now yield the floor to Chair Bustamante, the Commissioners, and the public for questions and comments during the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you, Max. Okay, we'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone online? We don't have anyone at the computer at this time. We have members of the public who would like to speak to this issue?
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, last time I was here, I was sworn in, I guess that this is just information.
This is public.
So, I'll just make my comments. My name is Lynn Pickard. I am the Chair of the Tusuki Valley Community Association, which is the Tusuki CO. I am here with Margot Cutler, who is also a Director, as I am, of the Community Association, and a member of the community and a member of the Community Association, Dr. Jamie Gagin. And we are here because three years ago, we participated in a Tusuki Roads Safety Study. It was adopted two and a half years ago and published. Since that time, virtually nothing has been implemented. Three of the projects that that study recommended made it onto the ICIP in past years, but for future years, like 2028, 2029. On the current version of the draft, I don't see any years. One of the projects, which has to do with complete streets in the Tusuki Village Core, a very dangerous place between the school and the post office, where there were a couple of restaurants, a lot of people walk around, people walk, there are dogs, that has dropped off of the ICIP. Two other projects continue to be on the ICIP, but very far down at the bottom. One has to do with a bike lane going up on Bishop's Lodge Road, where we're getting lots and lots of bicyclists, particularly mountain bikers, impeding traffic, and it's a dangerous situation. The other one has to do with traffic calming in the village, particularly on Tusuki Village Road. There was a recommendation to have a welcome sign in the middle of the road, and to have bulb bounces around the welcome sign so that people would naturally be encouraged to drive more slowly. So, those things are on the ICIP, Bishop's Lodge Road Bike Lane, and the welcome sign, and we would like to see them continue on the ICIP and moved farther towards the top.
One question.
Yes.
Honorable Lynn Pickard, were you ever informed of why that was removed from the list? And was, did you say that a traffic study has been done in that area?
Well, it was, maybe it's just an initial study, but the county hired an engineer, and members of the community were out there counting cars, explaining to the engineers where there were danger areas, and that study was published. But it was not funded, or it wasn't studied by a professional engineer who drafted up plans, and this is what needs to happen, and this is how much it's going to cost, and that sort of thing. Is that accurate?
Do we have any, thank you very much. Do we have any understanding of why the traffic study hasn't been moved on to address any of the findings, or if it was a study that was not engineered? What is the circumstance with regard to the Tusuki? Right, Chair Bustamante? Yes. These, the projects that we're asking to be removed are any of the studies that are on the list. There is one project that will remain on the ICIP, that's Tusuki Welcome Signs and Bulb Medials. That Bulb Medials, those are true infrastructure projects. The rest of them are studies, infrastructure projects have not completely been identified yet. And so, we're going to remove all of our studies and put them on a separate list for prioritizing, to get projects to the point of infrastructure projects. Okay, so, Item F says that these are the approved, are the infrastructure plans moving forward. It would or would not be on this list. All I see is Tusuki Welcome Signs and Bulb Medials, and is that Bulb Medials the, to address the safety concerns that the community has? They have other studies. They have the Tusuki Village Core Complete Streets Network, that's a study. It has not identified any infrastructure projects. That will be on another list to prioritize projects for the village. Same with Bishop's Lodge Road Complete Streets, that does not identify a true infrastructure project. The Tusuki Bishop Lodge Trailhead PER, that does not identify an infrastructure project. We want to separate those from our ICIP on a whole other planning process to prioritize projects. Once these studies are completed, then we can line them up in the cycles moving forward. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Max. Leandro, you might be able to answer this one, Max may as well, but I'll ask Leandro, when we have these studies and the priorities are studies, and I see a lot of trail completion, I'm sorry, I would like to open this for further discussion with the rest of the Commissioners, but it does raise a big flag for me, and we can study the heck out of things and know that certain drive areas have their potential, have risks. So, when I see trails highly ranked, and we're studying the daylights out of things, and I, you know, we have extended studies, I'm trying to understand when the actual activities to address those, whatever the findings are going to be from those studies are going to be provided, and moved, those activities moved into something that would require the capital improvement.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'll be very transparent and explain that there was a bit of a breakdown in the process between planning and implementation with Public Works. We're now working with Public Works to identify the next steps. Some of these, we hope, can be addressed through maintenance and through some of the maintenance funds at Public Works. The rest will be looked at in terms of the next step of that study to do more of a engineering and design to be able to give us more cost estimate and understanding of what it would actually cost so that we can pursue the funding for these projects. I do believe both PJ Montano in our projects team, as well as Ryan Ward in the roads, are working to try to understand what the issues are so that we can take it from a preliminary feasibility to a design project, to then be able to know what we need to ask for and address the concerns.
We really need to close that gap. We have traffic studies that are being conducted in the county that are now almost two years old, if not more, and we don't have actual projects that we're enlightened to yet. So, I appreciate some kind of closure of that gap. I hear the neighbors here, and I'm very concerned about that. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community who would like to speak? From the Commission, oh, we do, okay, yes, from the public.
I'm Jamie Gagin. I live on Bishop's Lodge Road. I've been out there for about 38 years, and I support everything that Lynn has said as well. The market area is of great concern to all of us, and we thought, when we were participating in this study, that it was more than a feasibility study, that it was actually, that there were engineers involved, and that we thought there would be some implementation implied. And so, we're just a little disappointed that that hasn't happened, although Ms. Herndon has given us a little bit of information about how the ranking system worked in terms of all the categories, trying to match up with the county's goals and mission and... of all the categories, trying to match up with the county's goals and mission and priorities, how some of the other smaller aspects of this road study might not necessarily check all the boxes that are used in the ranking system. But we just want to emphasize that that market corridor between the school and the post office is very dangerous, and it's accidents waiting to happen every day. There are no crosswalks for the kids during the school year to be able to get to where their parents may be parked at the market. The market thinks of Criego Hill Road as being a parking lot, and it's a disaster every day trying to get through there as a resident of the community because of the parking is so helter-skelter there. So we just want to remind you that this was something we thought was going to happen a couple of years ago, and we don't want it to be dropped. So thank you for your time.
Thank you sincerely. The other thing I would ask is that we would be able to see the scoring sheets if necessary? I just think it's important, and I do, did you want to comment to that?
If I may, Madam Chair, that is a big reason why we're recommending removing the planning and feasibility studies from the ICIP and from the evaluation. I again will be very transparent and say that the current evaluation and scoring does not bode well for plans. A lot of times, we run through the scoring of it, and when we identify it as a preliminary engineering report, there may be times it gets all the way through with two to eight points out of a possible, you know, total number. The scoring is meant more for infrastructure projects, and infrastructure projects tend to always score higher because there's a lot more detail to them, and those then rise to the top. What we want to do is propose, part of why we want to propose taking them out is so that we could work on a better evaluation process specific to planning, feasibility, and again, asking the board to allocate funds specific to those needs so that we can take it to the next phase, which would be a design, getting us more solid numbers, and then lead us to an actual infrastructure project that would then be put on the ICIP, and we can pursue different funding sources, whether it be state capital outlay or federal grants, state grants. There's a lot of opportunity once the project has solid design numbers.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to say one last thing. I'm going to pass this on to Commissioner Green. When I look at, and I'm just, you know, pulling right out of the hat here, and I see that we have a rail trail segment seven ranked before a water quality and quantity assessment, and I look at the criteria, I get that there are other shovel-ready elements to it, but when we talk about water quality and quantity, and that is below getting trails completed, it throws flags all over the universe for me, and it sounds like a very privileged opportunity. But I'm going to leave that right there and give us to Commissioner Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to speak at a higher level than specific projects, and at a certain point, I want to get into specific projects, but I want to talk about two different aspects that we're dealing with right here. There is a timeline of maturity of projects from idea to ribbon cutting, right? You're not even groundbreaking in here. And when we have this spectrum of someone has an idea, let's get that, let's see if it's worthwhile pursuing. We do a feasibility study, or not even preliminary engineering, but feasibility, you know, beginning ranking, first money in, then you get to preliminary engineering, then you get to design and engineering, then you get to construction, and then you get through this whole process here, and it's a long process. As Leandro said, there was a sort of disconnect somewhere in here. So I think part of what we need to do is start to reform a little bit of how we look at this and create that timeline, that once something passes that first gate, that it's a good enough idea to pursue, that it starts to have a timeline and a steady drumbeat of it moving. In one year, you want to achieve this and move it along in the pipeline. So when the folks from Tusukie say, "Well, you know, it was on the list for 2029," well, that's fine, but did it progress any towards maturity? So it will be ready by 2029 instead of it's just sitting there languishing. That may be a resolution that we have to do to sort of do something in our ICIP or our capital planning process here to make, you know, Max's life easier, Max's life more difficult, whichever way it goes, it's just to make us more effective, really, sorry. But that's the first thing that I would like to sort of have us start thinking about and looking at this process here. You know, and we know the process, right? And the process starts with an idea and scoring and then those things. So we need to lay that process out and see on a big giant wall all the different projects that are on each step of the process, not by project, but by timeline, right? I look at this line right here, and I see it by project. That's good, but I want to see it by timeline. So we can see that pipeline of projects, and it's the same stuff, but just looking at it from a different dimension. That would make our life a little easier, and I would hope that we would have that. And there can be a price tag on it, and so we can see at the bottom of a certain year what that price tag is and what the next year is and so on. So that's the first sort of metaphysical sort of thought process of this thing. The second one is that when I look at this list here and I see that it has what district it's in, and that's great for us here, for the five of us, but from another side of this, last year, when I was at the legislature, I had, we were given a chance of one ICIP project for each district. And based on what I just heard a little while ago, it sounds like you're going to recommend five again, and I think that that's wrong. I'll tell you why. I was asked to choose one, and I went for the biggest one, which was the Emmett Pawke Basin Regional Water System, $100 million or $48 million, whatever it was, an insane amount of money for one project, which I probably, we probably could not get the money through the legislators, and maybe we would have been able to get through the governor's office, but probably not all of it. And when I went to each legislator and I said, "Hey, would you give me some money for this? You know, I want to bring home, you know, and wouldn't you give us some money?" I went to Bobby Gonzalez, and so if you know who Senator Bobby Gonzalez is, he represents Taos, but he also represents a small fraction of Santa Fe County at his southern edge of his county. And when I asked him, because he was technically part of the delegation and represented part of Santa Fe County, he said, "Well, do you have a project in my district?" And I said, "Well, no." He goes, "Well, you're out of luck." And so we should have as another column in this matrix here, who the target legislator would be, so that we can go to them and say, "Look, this legislator normally gives $150,000 to Santa Fe County. Let's give them a $150,000 project," or $275,000 project for them to give us some money, instead of saying, "No, you didn't give me an opportunity." We should target this list as much for us and for the communities, but also for the legislators who actually give you the right to check. That would be the second sort of metaphysical sort of how we organize this, to target who the ask is to. Obviously, the projects have to be worthwhile to pursue for us, but instead of having five projects, we should have a project, at least one, per legislator, per district, senate, house, and so on. And we should have a conversation before we get to July 8th with each legislator. Every single one that has any part of this thing should say, "Look, here's our ICIP list. Do you think we should put this as a priority for you? And if so, we're going to expect you to put your money where your mouth is." And so I'm going to close this with one last little thing. And I'm going to talk about specific projects later, but I'll pass the mic in a second. Senator Linda Trujillo stopped me a couple weeks ago and said, "You know, Santa Fe County produced the nicest letter I've ever, ever received as a legislator." I said, "Oh, my God, what was that?" And if you remember, at the end of the session, we asked to write a letter to our legislators thanking them for the money they gave us. And she said, "Nobody's ever done that." And that just brought a lot of goodwill with Linda. Senator Trujillo loved that. I'm sure the other senators love that. So I think if we proactively, on this front end, go to them and say, "What would you be interested in? Here's our list. Is there something that we're missing, one? And two, is there something that you think that would be a good opportunity for you to fund when January comes along and we come knocking on your door?" We will get a lot more money because they will feel like they had some buy-in to the process so far ahead that they're going to feel obligated to give us money. Anyway, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hughes.
Well, interestingly, my conversation with Representative Stupansky was the same thing. We need to divide these up by which legislative district they're in and have one project that's a reasonable amount of money for each legislator. I've always done that for El Dorado because I'm very close friends with Matthew McQueen, and he tells me, "I want an El Dorado project." So we come up with an El Dorado project, but we need one for, you know, the other representatives as well. I think that would be very worthwhile. My concern is with Spur Ranch Road not being on the ICIP. I understand why you didn't put it on, but this is such a complicated project, and the residents on that road, it's the only minor collector that's dirt, and it's very hazardous to drive on during the rainstorms. Lots of people depend on it, and I want to, if not the ICIP, I want to have a very definite process for getting that paved. We tried four years ago, when I just first became county commissioner, to create a community improvement district, and that wasn't possible because it was way too much money for them to afford it, to pave it themselves and pay for it. They were willing to try, but it just wouldn't work. So, you know, I'm going to find out tomorrow what they expect them to apply for, to adopt it, but I also sort of want it on the ICIP now because we may come to that point by legislative where we are ready, and I hate to like miss a whole year of it. I mean, it's a very bizarre project because Spur Ranch Road was a driveway into Spur Ranch, and then we, some previous commission, not us, approved all this development along it, and now it's a mess. And, you know, they can't really drive on a driveway anymore. And they have a road association, they have improved it a little bit, but it really needs to be paved. And so, I don't know, I'm just, I mean, you can address that if you want to, but I'm just very concerned, and I want to, I see that as one of the biggest needs in my district because, you know, it is a road, it does involve life and safety.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, we totally appreciate your passion for that road. We understand the reason why the committee did not recommend it for a few reasons, and it's also in line with why we didn't recommend some of the nonprofit or private requests. If we do not own the project, we do have a very difficult time implementing capital outlay. We've had that struggle with some of the other nonprofits that we've been giving money for, Santa Fe Animal Shelter, for example, or the Opera. We were able to work with these entities. I still have not been able to get a resolution with the Santa Fe Animal Shelter. It's been three years, and they're on the clock with that appropriation. We may not be able to get to a place to get it to them before we're looking at a reversion. So the reason why we didn't recommend those types of projects was we couldn't realistically take the money and put it into action in a timeline that met the requirements of the capital appropriation. Rancho de los Colondrinas is another example. They had a request to try to pave their private parking lot. We met with them, we asked, "Would you be willing to give the county the parking lot? That's one option. That's one way for us to be able to do the project." That wasn't in interest of theirs. However, we did talk to them about other opportunities. Turns out, as we do our transportation study in La Cienega, there's an opportunity to address the cause of their problems in the parking lot, which might be the drainage issues coming off Los Pinos Road. That is a direction we would really like to work with them on and try to make a win-win where we can then maybe ask for money to help us improve our road, get a benefit to the county, as well as provide a true benefit to them and their parking lot problems. They would be willing to perhaps give us a small piece of property for a retention pond or a drainage issue. That's just one example, but that, I just want to explain why, as a committee, we find it difficult to be able to recommend a project that we don't have the ability to implement. And that's why Spur Ranch Road, we continue to try to find a way to follow existing processes or come up with a solution that can work. And I don't want to give up on it either. I think we will continue to work on how we can get there. But the truth is, we do ask developers, and you're right, of the past, we can't go back and fix those problems of the past. However, in fairness to the current situation, we do ask new development to put their money into a road, and that is typically passed down to the eventual buyers of the property that are going to benefit from the road. Therefore, the end user does end up paying for that infrastructure somehow. That's part of why we weren't able to, at the committee level, recommend that. I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, and well, so assuming things change for Spur Ranch Road and it gets, does become eligible, when's the latest we can put things on the ICIP? If we get some progress this year?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hughes, we have in the past come back and opened up the ICIP and done some revisions to it after the due date. However, the reason for the due date and the concept of the ICIP is that it's a planning document that reflects our short-term to midterm needs. If we are not identifying it as a short-to-midterm need, we're kind of going out to, it looks more like a wish list than it does a true planning document, and that's the goal of this year. And I think we, I very much appreciate the feedback we're getting right now from commissioners. Our committee agrees with so much of what you're saying. We have ran into this in practical experience that it isn't working the way it was intended, perhaps in 2019, and we do need to improve the process. Some of what we're recommending through this is the beginning stages of it. So yes, I think if we get to that point where we could put it on, or we find a resolution to fund the road and we end up adopting it somehow, I think then it becomes a preliminary engineering report or a feasibility study that we may ask the board to consider funding internally so that we could then take it to the next step of a design to get us solid numbers, to then make it an infrastructure project where we can pursue multiple funding sources, including state capital outlay. I really would like to get to the end goal that you're trying to get to as well. I think we're working towards the same end goal. We just feel somewhat constrained within existing county policies and requests from the state and the requirements of the ICIP. So to answer your question, we can amend the ICIP as we did last year, all the way into October, but that isn't always looked upon favorably when they ask, "Well, didn't you have a proper plan in July?" And that's what we're really trying to work towards now, is to have a ICIP that truly reflects the CIP and the needs that we have already, and why we need to put some projects back on that maybe we thought were fully funded, but by the time we get to the complete design, we realize it wasn't. That's an opportunity, as Max mentioned, Avellan Lopez. I think that's a great example that we missed this year. That was an opportunity, and now we've learned our lesson from that.
Okay, well, I look forward to your help on getting through this process because, you know, I feel badly for the people who have to drive on this road every day.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Mr. Cordova, and Max for your tremendous work here. And I want to be honest from a community perspective, I have been, you know, I've been poring over this and bugging Max since I started in January. When's all this going to happen? I've been meeting with Leandro, I've talked to the county manager, and, you know, I'm reading this, I've reread it, I read it a couple days ago, again, last night, this morning. And Max, I get it, but I'm still thinking, if I was a community member and I put in for an ICIP, where do I stand? Am I on the C? Am I on the consolidated? I'm on the exclusion list? I think we have to have a way to standardize this even more, and I know you agree. And we take the example of the Agua Freia Village Historical Arts Cultural Center, Community Center, and these people have been ready for a long time. So we have some gap and disconnect when we have community readiness to really invest in the infrastructure, community design, and similar to what Commissioner Green was talking about, when I hear the word shovel-ready, it leaves people in the dirt, literally, like, okay, this is shovel-ready, so now this is going to be kicked out, or this is kicked in. And I think from my notes here, we just have to say, is it feasible? Is it community-ready? Is there large community support? Because we don't want it to become just a Because we don't want it to become just a county government, internal-driven process where, we want to be sure that the community can determine and have equitable access and parity to new projects. And maybe we need to consider ICIP Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three categories rather than, well, that's just a study. Maybe, my question to you is, where does the Aguafria Village application stand? Because these folks with Commissioner Hanson have been working on this. I've been meeting with them so many times. And it's an excellent countywide opportunity to really make a mark on the history of Santa Fe from the Camino Real de Adentro and a marker of why this traditional village and what Santa Fe is about. And we really need a historical-cultural center that marks that, especially as we're looking at more development. You know, like the development where it's dos sequeyas and they destroyed, the third sequia, it could have been tres sequias. And where do they stand? Because I'm trying to give them a good answer, and I don't see a clear standing where they fit in the long-term plan. And it seems very piecemeal, and I know you agree, year to year, we're trying to figure it out.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kokari Stone, I do agree with you, and I do want to say that we have supported the efforts to this point. The Main Street grant that they pursued was Commissioner Hanson asking the county to support that and helping push them to that funding source, and they got that. They are now being recommended for the next phase of taking that preliminary study and making it something that the county can use to take to the next stage of hard numbers. But I will say, it is part of the entire process. And as Commissioner, or Manager Schaefer pointed out earlier in his presentation, our resources aren't, we do have to consider the resources available and balance out the other requests that we have. We do still have a major pipeline of projects that have started from the beginning where they're at now. They're no longer at the very beginning, they're at the next stage where we would hope to do a better feasibility and assessment. There are great ideas, and sometimes those ideas need to be specific to what the county is able to achieve. And we also need to consider the future operational expenses and needs of these things. That's why we're asking for an extension of their feasibility studies, specific to what the county would need to be able to get hard numbers. And then we can make a request for the full funding. At this point, the funding stack, or the capital stack, as we might call it, doesn't exist yet because we don't know what it is we're asking for. But we do, from the study I think I saw was a rough estimate of $12 million for what they had suggested might be the kind of building they want to see. And if that's the end number, that number's something we could work towards. But the $12 million was also a high priority, and you can see that that's the same amount of money that's been allocated to Aguafria Sewers. And that was a process over an eight-year period that got to this point now where the money is sitting there to continue that next phase. And we're not even at the completion of those phases. So, I think where they stand right now is they're in the next phase of the preliminary. And they're at that point where we can now understand what it's going to take for us to find that capital stack and how much we may want to pursue. And then these are all options that the board gets to choose at the end of the day. But do we want to include it as a geo-bond question at some point when we know how much it is? Do we want to pursue, besides state capital outlay, grant funding, federal funding? There's lots of ways to create that capital stack, but at this point, we don't know exactly what we're asking for. So, we got to get to that point to know exactly what we're asking for. Also, to see what's the best benefit and cost benefit for the taxpayers of Santa Fe County. I get that there's a great need for it and there's a great desire for it, but there's also a need for an Aguafria fire station right across the street. We have a million dollars allocated to that project. That's, now we realize probably only 10% of what it's going to take to create that project. So, there's money attached to that. Now, we need to look for the rest of the capital and we understand where we're going to put it and how we're going to prioritize what, you ask the chief, is a high priority for him in a 24-hour, 24/7 manned facility so that we have a true residential setting as well as the ability to house our apparatus. So, I think they're in line. They absolutely are, but it's going to take a while to move the line. And I just want to be candid about that.
So, Mr. Cordova, Max, and those who work on your team, you know, I really respect your work and value what you've done and put into this, very thoughtful. I'll be candid, I think we really need to push the next step because, as you know, and I'll say it in public because I've brought it up with you already, is when people put in for capital projects and they're not engineers and they're not working for the county, or they're not working for an organization that does this on a regular basis, right? We could not find any examples, and you guys couldn't pull any preliminary engineering reports from our county system to give them ideas of what things cost. So, $12 million was in there, and, you know, I was with them in the process, searching, searching. They searched, they searched for case examples, looking at Bernalillo County. We should be able to provide standardized particulars when they put in a capital outlay project request. They're just, people are guessing because we don't have any example, engineering reports that we couldn't have access to. And if you don't have it, we should have a compendium of examples from idea to the final and have it as be as case examples. Here's what happened, here's what it costs. Here's what happened at this stage, here's what it costs. And that, we put to invest in the next year, creating at least three case examples from idea to the end. And what it took to get it done, how long it took. Because when we don't have that, then it's kind of like that saying, "I don't know where I'm going, but I'll tell you when I get there." And people are really in the lurch, and it doesn't give them access and parity. Neither does it, as I, as a commissioner, access and parity. Now, if I'm serving and I'm on my eighth year, I might have the tricks of the trade. But I'm on my first year, but I'm here to advocate for what's needed and what could be funded and opportunities, for example, the Aguafria Village. So, that's my statement in public. We need case examples from beginning to end, and then more technical assistance going through those examples. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I appreciate that, and I understand the frustration in that. I will make this statement, though, we have 200, over $200 million already allocated to projects that were based on estimates and guesses that ended up becoming antiquated and unrealistic as time went on and major cost increases came to kind of bite us to a certain degree. We didn't want to create that false sense of, oh, the $12 million's the number, and then by the time it gets through the entire process, the design says, actually, now it's really 16 million. That's what we've seen in so many of the projects over the last three years that we've really focused on trying to fill the gaps on. The estimates and the good guesses kind of got us into the situation we're in now where we keep asking you to fill the holes because our guess wasn't good enough. And that's why Manager Schaefer is really adamant about, we need to know, we don't know until we have a contract for the most part. And we don't know until we put out an RFP and we've gotten responses from contractors saying, "Okay, we can do this project for 10 million. We have nine." Now, that's why we're coming back to you on certain projects, saying, "Can we have that extra million and lock down this contractor that says he could do it at 10 so that we could get it completed and off our list to move the next round of projects through the list?" But we still have quite a number of projects that we need to complete because, once upon a time, we took our best guess.
Well, I think you just made the case for creating some very solid, concrete example case studies from beginning to end, what they actually thought they cost and what they cost, because there are opportunities for us to learn and to give access and parity and information for people to put in requests. So, I think you made a great case right now for that.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. So, what I'm hearing, and I really appreciate all of the commissioners' comments and your back and forth has actually also been really helpful to understand the process. What I am seeing myself, and I agree with Commissioner Green, who first mentioned it, although I think it's basically endorsed by every other commissioner who's spoken thus far, is that if we could have a dynamic timeline that shows these sort of phases that we, that projects go through, right? They don't drop onto lists that sort of get filed elsewhere. And there, I think it would be really important because it's, as Commissioner Kokari Stone says, you know, when, when can a community see when their wish, right, which is based in a desire to improve where they are? When does the wish actually become an application, a project that has a scope that can be implemented or an RFP can be issued for it? So, I think, I looked at the 2019 resolution that governs the process. It seems to me like we might think deeply about updating that particular resolution or at least amending it. I believe you mentioned that, Leandra, so it's certainly on your mind. Because it's really important to understand where someone is in the process. And I think, as this kind of dovetails with your last point, original estimate, and then it's actually the true cost is 10 times, 15 times that amount. These, one could divide, this could just even be on a spreadsheet, but any number of ways to do it where there are thresholds where cost estimates get reconsidered and shown to, I think this would speak to Commissioner Kokari Stone's point, too. What you thought was going to cost 100,000 actually costs a million. And so, in Phase Two, the community, the project, whatever it is, sort of reevaluated and understood that. And we see this in the case with the Canyada de los Alamos pipe, right? It's a great idea, it's just extremely expensive. And so, once you sort of digest that, you see how projects that would have been great for ICIP may not actually be because of cost benefit analysis. So, I'll stop there. I don't need to, like, belabor this, but I think Resolution 2019-103 needs to be updated. And I want to endorse the compendium of examples because that's the best way, I, in other areas of my life, apply for grants, apply for projects. Looking at other ones is actually how you learn, that sort of thing. Some communities have the time and energy to pour into research like that, others don't, and it'd be helpful to have examples. So, I know that's a big ask, and, but it would be really nice, I think, and a great gesture to the inclusiveness that is baked into the ICIP process to kind of get moving on that. So, I really appreciate your feedback, though. That helped me understand, you know, how complicated this gets and why we need to make these decisions, that sometimes it is, I agree, when a trail system is above a water system, how are we ranking these? How are we understanding that? So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to also follow up on that. When we look at these projects, and one thing that we've discussed before, and the opportunity to have the transparency of the project and then the process and where it is, you know, to have, similar to what we have in growth management, when an ICIP project is proposed, that it's very clearly identified what would have to happen. And I'm just going to recommend taking a look at Thurston County, Washington, Public Works Process Page. We, if we include something like the ICIP component that says this was scored at this level and this is how, so that it's transparent to the public, it should be something where it becomes evident that, I see this, I see why this is put this way. So, there is an opportunity, and there are, I understand there are software packages that could provide that process flow so that it's all very, because we're all going to fight for, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go for a road project before I'll go for, you know, a historic building build or whatever, in the interest of health and safety. But if all of those items are disclosed in this process map that a person can click on to see the status of the project, this much has been acquired financially, like, literally, there's statements in here, an additional 3.5 million was received for XYZ that gives people an understanding of where things are sitting. And we've talked about that kind of, I would say transparency, but it's also part of that huge customer service component. Because I do agree that people say, "Well, we had been talking about this for how long?" And, yeah, you may have, but other issues do come up, and other issues have more immediate needs sometimes, and we need to make sure that that's transparent to our public. I appreciate you listening. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns? This is an open, a public meeting. Commissioner Green?
Madam Chair, just to take the mic back for two seconds to discuss specific projects that I would hope to see, if they, you know, both in the sense that this is an early, let's call it a wish list. And that if these projects can get pulled, put on the list to DFA now, and then if they can't become ready, whether it's Spur Ranch Road or some other thing that's in here, or a center on, in the Aguafria Village, if they, if we can find the way to get something ready for November, December, when it, right before the session, it's on the list and it moves forward. And then in December, November, December, before we publish the final, final, final list, all we're doing is cutting. And we cut down at that point. So, my concept is, is like, okay, look, Spur Ranch Road, it's not ready right now. That doesn't mean remove it. That means keep it on there and give Commissioner Hughes a chance to figure out how to put something together for that, whether that's a financing thing, a design thing, or whatever the pieces are to get it ready for that. If it's a small project in Tuskegee that the neighborhood wants to do there, let's figure out how to get it ready. And if we can't, so be it, we try it. You know, but instead of precluding it now, we were on it, don't cut us out. So, the projects that I would like to see us with the chance of trying, at least in my district and some other areas on things. So, one, Pawokee, baseball fields, there's been a request for years to turf one more field. It is goat heads and dirt out there. A ball field would turf, a few of them have been done, or one or two of them have been done. A third one would be great out there, and it's an easy thing that the neighborhood would love to do out there. Chimayo, I was there, as I mentioned earlier, has been asking for support for the plaza restoration. They've identified a wastewater system that would bring in, instead of a bunch of septic tanks around the plaza, potentially a collective wastewater project over there. Again, this might not be able to be ready in time, but let's put it on the list and see if we can do it. Commissioner Kokari Stone and I have been approached, I think even more of us have been approached, about helping Moving Arts find a new location up in Sombrio. Now, that's a private situation, but let's figure it out. If we can figure it out in time, I know a senator that will give it a lot of money and make this thing, make this thing happen. So, let's figure out how to get it ready for the legislature so that legislator, that senator, will say, "Thank you for getting this ready for me and for our community." And then lastly, Girls Inc. was here earlier today, and they're going to be building a project that it's going to take them a few years, but maybe we can find a way to start putting money aside for them that's the county's contribution. It's right at the edge of the Aguafria Village, it's technically in the city of Santa Fe, but it provides services to everybody, all, not everybody, young women across Santa Fe County. And I think those four projects have a chance if they hustle and know what the benchmark and what they need to get to, to be qualified for us to move forward and support their projects, if that was possible. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Those are the four that I can think of off the top of my head.
Thank you. Commissioner Green, in the interest of time, I'm going to start my list right now, and I hope that you all are very comfortable because La Cienega's been waiting for its open space park, like a park, a place where kids can play. And I'm kidding, in some respect, I'm saying, this is something that was discussed in the 1990s. So, when we talk about that thing, and I'm not asking us to consider that here today, I just want, frankly, in the interest of the other commissioners, knowing that there are projects that have been sitting on these lists for quite some time. And to call them wish lists and to call those other things priorities is really important. So, I'm going to leave that right there. I'm going to say that, that there are parts of our county that have not received any adequate attention to some of those things that could have improved even the visibility and quality of life in the area when people look and say, "Wow, what's going on over there?" And it's not a health and safety issue right away, but it's not... And it's not a health and safety issue right away, but it's not, it's also not something that's very inviting to the community. All that being said, there are a number, and I'm really actually just trying to praise you in being able to sort through all of these, knowing that each one of us sitting here has something that we have been hearing community ask for for a very long time. I think that our greatest opportunity is communication and exposure of what those processes are and how they get here. And I say that out of absolute trust that you all are doing the best you can with what you have, knowing that you're going to get it somewhere, right? So how do we put that out there so that we can all vie for our particular projects and understand where we are based in relationship to other things that are important to other parts of the county, what's health and safety, what's more immediate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So I'm grateful for that. Is there anything else that anyone wants to say in the interest of closing our conversation? Leandro?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the feedback. It is great, we are listening. And speaking of praise, I do want to take a quick second to really thank Max and our committee for the work they've done. I appreciate the example of Thurston County, but Max has also reached out to Los Alamos County, Bernalillo County, City of Albuquerque, because we know we could do better, and there's examples out there that we're looking towards. A lot of the reason or a lot of the recommendations coming forward this year are based on some of that research they've done. How to work with nonprofits has come from some of that research. We made it a point to reach out to the entities that we felt we may not be able to help, but we wanted to make sure they didn't feel like we just left them without help. And so Madrid, La Cañada, Golandrina, all examples of a great conversation that we had, and that's probably came from an example of Bernalillo County. So really, really appreciate the feedback. We are listening, and we'll continue to work to make it better, and you guys are definitely helping us make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you sincerely. Is this all that we have for public? We have people online. Do we have anyone who can help us with the people online? We don't have a way to take comment online at this time. No, he just has his screen open, that's where he sits. Okay, thank you, Matt. We do have, we do have someone online. William, do you have your hand up or are you observing? Please raise your hand if you are expecting to speak. Okay, we have William Me online. That would be our only... She would have to raise her hand if she wants to. Okay. If they're listening and I have called for them to raise their hand, they should raise their hand, or I am not going to wait to see if someone's going to raise their hand to speak. I have one person who has raised their hand, we will allow William Me to say something, to contribute frankly to the community input for ICIP. All right.
Okay. Madam Chair and Commissioners, you know, we talked this afternoon about issues in Aguafria, and there was a lot of clarification made then, and County Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone made several good points this afternoon. And now that we're in the evening session, you know, I see some really good ideas coming to the forefront. And, you know, other than me just saying, "I support everything in Aguafria Village" to go forward, which I do, but, you know, I think there's a need for us to get together with our commissioner and also with Max and the deputy county manager and kind of see where we are with all these projects and see how we can move them forward. So thank you.
Thank you, William Me. Do we have anyone else with their hand raised to speak?
Chair Bustamante, I don't see anybody else raising their hand.
Okay, this is the close of public comment. Thank you. Thank everyone for your participation. Sincerely thank you for your patience and spending the afternoon with us, we appreciate it. And...
Move to adjourn? Oh, sorry.
We will, yeah, I will entertain a, well, we have a, any last-minute concluding business? Any last announcements? If there are none, I would like to entertain an action motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, I'll second them.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Johnson. We have a second with Commissioner Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Onward ho. We are...